... seat. Thank you. Calling to order, the opened, an opening of the adjourned annual town meeting. Today is May 31st, 2017, and the time is now 7:03. We have a quorum present of 105 voters. The tellers have not been sworn. Actually, I need my tellers down front, I forgot. Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Bazler, Mr. Pepe? Or if you can remain where you are and just raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear to faithfully perform your duties as a teller for this annual town meeting?
I do.
Mr. Pepe?
I do.
Thank you. Tellers have now been sworn. The warrant having been previously declared properly noticed with constable return of service. As dictate, we waive the reading of the warrant. And now let me recover the rules of the meeting. Town meeting is run by town meeting time as Kingston bylaws dictate. If you wish to address town meeting, you raise your hand or you step to a microphone, wait to be recognized, then step up to the microphone and give your name and address. During debates on articles, keep your comments focused on the articles and do not make things personal. Let's remember to respect each other and only one person shall speak at a time. It's being recorded and the town clerk is taking as our clerk for records. Point of order, if you raise a question, is the speaker entitled to the floor? Is what the speaker saying proposing irrelevant, illegal, frivolous, contrary to procedure? Or is any pending action frivolous, illegal, irrelevant, or contrary to procedure? That would be point of order. It's not seconded, it's not debated, it's not amended or reconsidered, it's moderator's sole discretion. Question of privilege raises any issues affecting your rights, inability, and to participate in the meeting, if your safety, your dignity, your integrity, volume, temperature, noise, interference with ability to hear, speak, or participate. As you know, we've had some issues with intimidation, so I'm asking everyone again, please respect a voter's right to vote as they see fit. And do not intimidate any individual, don't confront them, don't talk to any individual. Thank you. On a motion to amend, I ask that you make the motion, but then it must be put in writing and it will be debated. Sometimes we have to get the writing first, sometimes we'll get the writing as it's being debated. Motion to reconsider pursuant to Kingston bylaws, it's either made, which would be tonight, after the article is heard, or if it's gonna be, if we go beyond tonight, let's hope not, the goal is to get through Article 65 tonight, then you would have to raise it, if it does go beyond tonight, you'd raise it by 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning at the town clerk's office. Motion to call the question, feel the debate's gone on long enough, and with that in mind, you have to step to the microphone, you cannot debate first, and you move to call the question. I want to remind everyone, let's try to, we're trying to get through some business, so I'd like people to focus on getting up no less than twice, so be succinct, cover what you need to cover, and not be repeatedly at the microphone to move the meeting along. I'm gonna ask that again for fire reasons, we need all four of the door areas cleared and nobody hovering or standing near them, and I need everyone seated unless you're up at the microphone speaking. And please remember to go outside for conversations, 'cause you might be whispering, but believe it or not, sometimes that carries. I can actually sometimes hear people whispering in the back. It's the acoustics of the room. So with that understood, everybody understand our rules of the meeting? Okay, so that wasn't too bad, 7:07, we're moving right on. We left off and completed Article 31, so we're moving to Article 32, ladies and gentlemen. Article 32, Affordable Housing Trust. Ms. Landis-Nahman.
Move to amend the Town of Kingston general bylaws by adding a new Article 21-
One second, can, I don't think that mic's on.
Can you turn it on? Is it on? It's on.
Okay.
Move it. All right, there we go.
Now we can hear you.
All right. Move to amend the Town of Kingston general bylaws by adding a new Article 21 to Chapter 4, Affordable Housing Trust, as printed in the warrant.
Having a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, if I may make a friendly amendment, council has determined we had a typographical error. And if I can draw everybody's attention to Section 4-21-5, you will see that's on the top, actually, is it the bottom?
Top of page 33.
Top of page 33.
Yeah.
Subparagraph 14.
And it's subparagraph 14. So it's on top of page 33, I'm just getting there myself, as you know, our pages are numbered And you will see it says, "To manage or improve real property and to abandon any property which the board determined not to be worth retaining, provided that any property to which the trust holds title shall not be abandoned with," and it's actually needs to be "without." It should be "without," otherwise we, you know, you have the double negative for it to work, the approval of the Board of Selectmen. So I'm making a friendly amendment for that typographical error. And I have a second on the amendment, thank you. We had Board of Selectmen favorable action 500. Ms. Landis-Nahman, if you'd like to address your-
Yes, please. The Affordable Housing Trust was created by Article 3, the special town meeting of June 2nd, 2014. So the town's already accepted an affordable housing trust. Because the language approved for the article carries more restrict-
They can't hear you again, Jean.
I don't know what the deal is, I'm practically eating this thing.
Can you guys increase the microphone on down at the podium? The volume on it?
Okay. Because the language approved for the article carries more restrictions than the state requires, town council has advised us that we should submit it as a bylaw. The bylaw states there'll be seven trustees, which differs from the five or seven that was included in the original article. And I just wanted to mention the current trustees, Pine Dubois is our chairperson, Kathy Lanatra, Paul Armstrong, and myself, and I understand last night William Mello was approved as another trustee. This is a housekeeping article, and the trustees asked the town meeting to support this article.
Thank you, Ms. Landis-Nahman. Do I have any debate on this? Yes, Mrs. Hallow.
Good evening, Dorothy Pat Hallow, Three Pebble Lane, Kingston, Massachusetts. I have read the article, and I have read the handouts that have been given to us, and I have seen some things and I have not seen others. For example, on the handout, Kingston Affordable Housing, it states that the federal and state, there are federal and state guidelines. I would have liked to have seen in this article those guidelines. You're asking eventually for a sum of money and some property within the town here. But the audience and the population of Kingston doesn't understand what this means. So I have, I would like to really see the regs posted so that people understand what this means. He's charming, isn't he? That was Danny. Now, thank you. The second item that I saw was that these would be modestly priced studio apartments in single-room occupancy. Underneath that, there's a term, including the elderly. I prefer not to call people elderly, I call the group of chronically defined elderly in Kingston actually as youthful. They are articulate, they are committed, they are kind, they are loving, and they are great volunteers. So from here on in, I'm calling them youthful, you can call them pleasantly some other name. What I find disturbing in this, these two statements is that there has been discussion within the town, I heard Elaine and Pine and Mary discussing the fact that affordable housing would be an advantage to some of the elderly in the youthful, in Kingston because of the increases of taxes and the burden that it has placed on these individuals. However, there are no guidelines, the application for affordable housing is missing. What does it mean? Does it mean that the youthful have to sell their house in order to be a member of the Affordable House constituency? Does it mean that 1% of the elderly youthful will be encouraged to participate in the program? Does it mean that it will be done by a lottery? Does it mean that if the youthful do sell their home, what does that mean to their financial statement and the significance of getting into affordable housing? And do they need lawyers and accountants to determine their fate? So these are the questions that are open. However, it's not defined what the seven pages of the application are. And I mentioned the seven pages when I'm referring to actually the Kingston scattered homes, I'll get to that a little later on. The other issue is the Community Preservation Act. Right now, there's a little bit over $600,000 in the Preservation Community Act. However, the terminology that's used is not community affordable housing, it's defined as community housing. Community housing is a little bit different than straightforward affordable housing. So my question is, and I don't see the answer to it, is that money really to be used just for affordable housing? Or at some point could it be used for something like elderly housing, per se? Don't know, maybe, who knows? It's not stated at all. If someone is interested, they can get online to the town's home page, and there is a Kingston Scattered Homes Affordable Housing, and it has both the application and the regs. I'm not saying that this would pertain to the affordable housing that's being established here, however, it would give the reader or anyone who's interested in affordable housing some of the prerequisites that are required to jump into the program. If, you know, listening to Mary and Elaine and Pine, it's a win-win situation. If some of the very youthful become members of the Affordable Housing Association, I'll call it that, it's a win-win situation because the house that they sell will be giving taxes to the town, and the house that they purchase will be giving taxes to the town. So it's good, from that point of view. Now, what I saw in the actual article would be things like, the seven members of the trustees who are supposed to meet at least four times a year, this is a business, and I have no opposition to the business at all. Anyone that knows us knows that we are entrepreneurial, we think outside the box, we love the challenge, we love to work hard, and we encourage everyone to participate in programs that are beneficial to our fellow men. So that's a given for my family. However, the, it's impossible for someone to meet only four times a year, it says at least four times a year. But it would have to be more than that because this is a business, and it has to be addressed as such. The members of the trustee has to be residents and they have a two-year term. What are their powers? They can purchase, they can purchase land, they can purchase houses, but where are they gonna get the funds to purchase these items? Are they gonna come back to the town and say, "We want more money"? I'm personally against that kind of an attitude, I am, you earn your living, you've been given money, you work with that money, and you expand that money, and that's what I feel that this trust should do. I don't see that in this article. They can sell property, that's great, that's great. What do they do with the funds when they sell it? Who pays the taxes on this? Who does the selling? Is there gonna be someone from the town, or is there gonna be a member of the trust? Is it fair to ask the town to supply secretaries, clericals, lawyers, advisors, architects, everything that's required to get this program up and going? That's a question that should be asked and answered. As a trust, they should really have their own funding, if I'm not mistaken, and the question would also be, if they are a trust, is each unit a separate entity of itself? And as a separate entity, it has to have its own bank account? What goes in, comes out. You can share your money, but you have to repay your money. And that's a very unusual concept in today's world, whatever you take from someone, you give back to someone. And that's what I'd like to see this trust do, be a business, a flourishing business, and it can, if it's structured. What I said in the article was no structure at all. They can lease land. Okay, that's great, that's terrific. So who's gonna prepare the lease? What will the lease incumbent, will all the utilities be paid for? Who, to whom is a check made out to for the lease? Is there a termination of the lease? Are there anything, are there any stats in the lease that kind of protect the property? One thing that is really very good about this article, I must have, the town will not be held responsible if it goes belly up. I appreciate that, I don't hear that very often. So that's one thing we wouldn't have to be concerned about, and that is in the article. They can exchange lands, they can transfer lands, just to say a few other things. Who maintains the properties? I don't see that. I think that's important, I think it should be, we should know what's happening with this money. I'm not opposed to trusts, I'm not opposed to growth, I'm certainly not opposed to helping people out, that is for darn sure. But I am opposed to the way that this is presented because it's not, the light is not shined. It's just as simple as that. Some of the things that I thought would be interesting to discuss is employees. Now, I may to understand that the trustees would be municipal employees, is that correct? Well, it is correct, 'cause it's in, so anyhow, if they're municipal employees, that means they have the benefits. Who's gonna pay them? Is the town expected to pay them? Or should it come out of the trust, its own funds? I think that's a legitimate question, I didn't see the answer here. What about clerical individuals who do the paperwork, they print, they type, they run around, they get the deeds ready? Advisors, you'll need advisors, you mentioned advisors in the article, lawyers, accountants, appraisers, architects, builders? Where are these people coming from, and who's gonna support them, who's gonna pay them? They're entitled to be paid for the services. Is the town going to be held hostage to paying them? Or is it the trust, the business, that's gonna pay these individuals their salaries? Who's gonna seek funds? Who's gonna be fundraiser? That's a thought, it's a clever, it's a great idea, and it's effective. Who's gonna be out looking for land to purchase? Where are they gonna get the money to purchase it? Will Abire purchase the land for them and incorporate affordable housing within the structures? I don't know, it's not in the article whatsoever. There's banking that has to be done, oh, who's gonna be doing the banking? Is Ken gonna be, I know he's gonna get the funds, but is he also gonna be responsible for banking and writing checks? Or is that gonna be up to the trust itself to do, under the supervision of the trustees? I don't know. It's, it's not here. It's not been answered. So, what do you need? You need office space, I would, you need some space where you meet, where you type, and you have a computer, and you have a telephone system. Where is that gonna be? Who's gonna pay for that? Is it gonna be foisted on the town to supply that, or not? Is there gonna be a trust thing, or is the trust gonna pay the town for the use of a room, a secretary, or the heating, or a computer? How is that gonna work? I don't see it. I don't object to the trust, I can't tell you that enough. But it doesn't have any structure. It's just a lot of words about what can be done, but no responsibility, no sense of where it's coming from, how far it will go, at what point do you terminate the trust because there are enough affordable housing? Or do you turn that into another concept that would better the community that we live in? I don't know. I mean, that can be discussed, it hasn't been discussed.
Mrs. Hallow, could you, one second, we were going to, Ms. Dubois.
I want to ask, I'm almost finished.
Ms. Hallow, if you can wrap it up.
I am, thank you.
Pine, please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. There's a difference between debate and discussion. Anyhow, so getting back to the last two things I wanted to mention, why is the term affordable housing changed to affordable municipal housing? What's the trick in there that caused that change? That's a question, who can answer it? Okay, well, that can be taken up at another time, to discuss at another time.
Okay, Mrs. Hallow, please wrap it up.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. So I am suggesting that the town folk that are here tonight do not vote in favor of this particular article until the article is better defined, so that we, as taxpayers, as members of the community, as the youthful, have an opportunity to understand really what's taking place and enjoy a business that is town-owned in a sense. So this is the last thing I'm gonna say. The reason I do not want to vote in favor of this, and I suggest that you do, is because Article 32 does not define the strength of its own convictions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hallow, if I can answer a few of your questions. First of all, federal guidelines are very rarely ever put into bylaws, all right? That wouldn't be the proper protocol because they would be referencing over to the federal guidelines.
That you say, excuse me.
I'm answering questions now, Mrs. Hallow.
I know, but I want, as part of your answer, I'd like to express my thoughts.
I'm answering first.
Why can't, but just because they're not, doesn't mean they can't.
Mrs. Hallow, I'm answering, one person speaks at a time.
Why was speaking, thank you.
You can stay at the microphone, I'm answering some questions to rule them out, you raised some very valid questions. I'm answering, federal guidelines are not included in bylaws. Town council has confirmed that. They're usually, because they're a reference item, otherwise we'd have bylaws that were 100 pages long for one article. You talked about the elderly, elderly is actually a classified legal term, that's why we call them elderly. That's why it's referred to as elderly, because it's both a federal and a Massachusetts legal term. In regard to the CPA, I'll get back to that one. The limitation on meetings is purely just a limit of the minimum amount of meetings. Clearly, they've already had meetings as a committee, and they'll, that was appointed by the Board of Selectmen, so they'll continue to have meetings, that's just the minimum amount. In regard to the leased land, all of that is explained on the insert, the trustees have all that power. I did have a question, and if town council can answer in regard to the one question in regard to employees, are the trustees going to be considered employees subject to benefits? And I know that's a question that people have raised.
No, the answer is no, the reference to employees, that they're considered employees for the purposes of the conflict of interest law pursuant to the statute.
So they won't be available for, for benefits, but they have to be for conflict of interest and subject to the municipal conflict of interest. Last, in regard to experts, of course, they're gonna be doing that. Now, Ms. Landis-Nahman, if you can start by answering some of the other questions in regard to, did you take any notes, or did you, do you want me to run them by you? The moderately priced studio apartment, single-room, actually, we can go by that. The application, they're never in the bylaws, applications would change day to day, year to year, so those would be referenced separately.
They weren't referenced.
In regard to the word CPA with community housing versus affordable housing, can you address that one? Or can Ms. Dubois address it?
That, I can address, that's a statutory change that the Community Preservation Act made pursuant to Municipal Modernization Act last year.
Oh, that was the new?
Yes.
Okay. So that answers that one, is that, there was a new Municipal Modernization Act, we're all always updating, future, and that was the difference in the terminology. So now, if you guys, if you, Ms. Landis-Nahman or Ms. Dubois, who's on your committee as well, if you can answer some of the question, like in other words, who does the selling? That was one of the questions raised.
Okay.
And how is the trust gonna be managed in the sense of money in, money out?
There are strict guidelines from the state and through the CPC as to how that money is managed. All the money does go through an account managed by the treasurer. We have limitations in this bylaw, nothing over $25,000 can proceed without it going through the Board of Selectmen first. Trying to think of all the questions you had.
Well, that's just, I can give them to you as we go along.
Okay.
I can repeat them.
Who gets to lease the land? Would that be the trustees who would actually be issuing the leases? Or the power?
There are many, many variations on what Affordable Housing Trust can do. Our trustees have attended two seminars put on by the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, and there are many towns that have Affordable Housing Trusts. Each of them seems to approach it a little differently, but we all have to go by the state guidelines, which is how this article was written, with the restrictions the town meeting imposed back in 2014. We would employ agents to do all the necessary things that have to be done regarding housing, and that money can come out of the trust funds. Money can put in the trust funds from various sources. Tonight, there is an article requesting money from the CPC, which has been sitting there because there's no one else looking to provide affordable housing for the community.
Article 37, which are we coming up?
Yep, Article 37. We have attended the meeting of the planning board, because in some towns, when builders do not want to include affordable units in their development, as is required under our inclusionary housing bylaw, the developer can provide payment in lieu of, and we've already talked to the Board of, Planning Board, because up to now, they've had no source, no place to put that money. Now, they can place it in the trust run by the Affordable Housing Trustees. There are grants, there's many sources of funding, we'll be working with experts in this field to determine appropriate sources, taking the necessary steps to apply, and continue to work with Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals on all affordable housing issues.
Thank you, Ms. Nahman. Okay, if council can address the issue on the lease and the maintaining of the property?
Sure.
How does it work, how is it operating?
I think that the overall issue needs to be addressed, that the Affordable Housing statute was adopted by the state legislature sometime around 2004, 2005, to allow communities to be more proactive rather than reactive with regards to affordable housing, and so they could do locally what was necessary, what they thought was in the best interest of the community. And so, the statute was provided to give a trust, a local trust, the powers to buy, sell, lease, maintain real estate, and they would do it themselves or hire people to do it and/or sell properties to be maintained forever with restrictions for affordable housing to help retain and maintain affordable housing in their community. So the trustees have the power to either do it themselves with the funds that they have, or to hire people to do it. In this particular trust, the, the motion that has been put forward actually limits some of the authority that the state statute provides, which is much broader, by requiring that approval, certain approvals to go before the Board of Selectmen rather than just the Affordable Housing Trust itself. So, all of that power is given within the trustees, they then also have the power to adopt regulations to be more specific under the bylaw on how they're gonna conduct meetings and/or, and specifics on how they would hire people and things like that, they're subject to the procurement laws, they're subject to the open meeting law, they're subject to the conflict of interest law, they have all those same requirements that any other board or commission would have in the Commonwealth.
Great, thank you. I think that pretty much covered all of your raised issues, Mrs. Hallow.
Well, actually, I didn't-
Do you have any other questions?
Yes, yeah. The units, is each unit a separate entity under this trust? Unit meaning accommodation, studio, one-room house, is it a separate, each, each unit is separate from the other, under this trust?
Ms. Landis-Nahman?
I don't understand the question, what do you mean, separate?
Separate means to be alone, divided from the rest, so that if you have five pieces of property, each property stands by itself, it's its own individual.
Ms. Dubois, if you can address that.
I have no idea what she's asking. Pine Dubois, 93 Elm Street, and I am the current chair of the Affordable, Kingston Affordable Housing Trust, which are the members of this community and not employees of any stripe. I think what you're asking is, once we, if, should we get a chance to develop affordable housing, would we retain ownership of that? And the answer is no. The purpose of the trust is to create affordable housing, to use the mechanisms that already exist to move that housing along to people that are in need, be they young people or seniors, or, you know, youthles, whatever. It's not to hold it. So, if, if we were fortunate enough to build, say, an apartment building, each apartment would probably be handled by whoever took the building. So, in, in that sense, the units would be separated, but they would be required to go to somebody who needed help being able to, you know, rent it, or whatever the agreement was, okay? So if it was a house, and you had more than one house on a single piece of property, chances are, there would be single-unit ownership. And then there would be a restriction on those buildings, so that the person selling it would have to then, again, sell it to somebody that also needed an affordable housing. So there would be a housing, a restriction on that. Currently- Currently, you know, we've been meeting since November. We've been meeting twice a month since November. I can't even imagine meeting less than that. So, although the bylaw provides a lot of guidance, and as town council said, is more restrictive than the state law, we are happy to live within that. We handle no money. We are accountable to the CPC, once a year CPA, the Community Preservation Committee in town, should we take any CPA funds, and to tell them exactly how that was spent on their community housing charge. We have to perform what they raised that money for. We can't use it on anything else. So, you know, I think if you spend the time to read all of the words in that bylaw, it's quite long and is quite structured. I don't share your concern that it's not structured. I think it's deeply structured, although I think it gives room for us to create an action plan and a way forward. We're starting to learn from all of the other towns because everybody does it different. And that, to me, is the beauty of it, so that we can tailor something that will work for the town of Kingston. And I think that we will structure it as we go along, and I'm happy that it's, gives us a little bit of latitude, because I think that it will enable us to build things that the town really needs.
So if a property is leased...
Thank you, Mr. Dubois. Ms. Harlow, please wait until I ask you.
Beg your pardon.
I'm giving you one further question, and then we're going to move on. Other people want to debate as well. So one further question.
Debate or discuss. I love the difference.
Mrs. Harlow, one question.
Yes.
Ask it.
And the question is, if the property is leased, does it stand on its own as a separate entity, as a separate series within the trust?
So, are you asking if, so we have the right to lease land in order to develop for affordable housing. If we were to lease it out, I don't know how that would work. So, we might, we might work with a developer, so we might devise the plan. We want to see this and this up there to fill a need that's in town. And then, we might get somebody else to build it, and we would never own anything. So, you know, leasing, we haven't really discussed yet. We will certainly. We don't have any of that in front of us right now, but I don't, I'm not, I'm not focusing in on what your concern about it is. Sorry. I don't quite understand it. I don't think that there's a, you know, a deep hole there that we can fall into.
Thank you, Ms. Dubois. Mr. Kennedy?
David Kennedy, 13 Copper Beach Drive, if I can. Madam Moderator, is it possible that we could also, at this point, review Article 37, Article 40, 49, and 54?
The answer to that is no.
Okay.
This stands by itself.
Can I, can I explain the reason why?
No. I mean, one is funding. We all get it. This trust is either being created in this article or it's not being created in this article.
Okay.
Well, I meant this bylaw. I meant the bylaw. This is about the bylaw only, this article.
Okay, that's fine. Mrs. Harlow actually covered everything I was going to say, so I won't add anymore.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I had Chairman Wilson. Did you want to get up? You're passing. Okay. Mr. Fons?
John Michael Fons, 16 May Avenue. So, just before I get to my question, just real quickly, just generally speaking, I have a little bit of concern with not necessarily having all the information that we need. This is by no means condemning any of the job that's been done by any of the individuals involved in this project. I truthfully don't know what type of job has been done, so I'm not making criticisms. However, as voters, the key thing that we need is information. So, I understand there was a lot of questions asked. I feel that a lot of those questions were very, very valid, and I'm appreciative that they were asked. Some of them were answered. I appreciate the answers. However, some of it has not been clarified. And as we just heard, some of it, we just simply don't know. Even the individuals involved in the projects don't know the answers to some of these questions that I feel are very important. So, just from a general standpoint, I think as voters, it's very difficult for us to vote on something with part of the information, right? I think we need to know, maybe not every last bit, but we should have a significant amount of information before we just vote on something. Otherwise, we're essentially blindly voting. Again, I understand adaptations. I understand flexibility. I understand what was said about, you know, we're going to kind of work this as we go and change the structure as we go and kind of figure it out. Me, as a voter, I don't feel comfortable with that. I'd like to have a solid plan, a structure, and understand exactly what is at least planned on being done, and then, again, go from there. But I just wanted to say that generally. My question is somewhat echoing what Mrs. Harlow presented. I think amongst many, many valid questions, I think one of the most important ones, which I feel is somewhat, was somewhat overlooked, was this issue of senior citizens, if they sell their homes to essentially, so, let me back that up. I also heard certain individuals in town at Board of Selectment meetings make comments saying that the affordable housing would be good because as our property taxes rise, it's a stress and a difficulty for our senior citizens, and affordable housing could be a great option for them to stay in Kingston. So, the issue is, if someone owns a home in Kingston and is a senior citizen and says, you know what, I can't afford my taxes anymore. I'd like to stay in town. Let me sell my house and then go move into affordable housing. When that person sells their house and potentially has $250,000, $300,000, $350,000 in the bank, does that individual possessing that amount of money disqualify that individual from affordable housing? That's an extremely important question to have answered, because if the answer is yes, that they are disqualified, and we know that that is the answer, then what we have here is someone being disingenuous, telling us that this would be great for senior citizens. If the answer is no, then, okay, it's truthful that that would be an option for senior citizens, which I would suggest, at the very least, indicates a disconnect between what our elected officials think our people want and need versus what they actually want and need. I, for one, love Kingston, but guess what? My appeal to staying in Kingston is not staying within the town boundaries. It's staying within the home where I grew up, where I have memories, okay? And I think a lot of senior citizens probably feel that way. They love Kingston, but they love their home more than they love Kingston. So for them, for just to say to senior citizens, I don't worry about it. We're booting you out of your house because the property taxes are so high, but you can go to affordable housing and still say you live in Kingston. To me, that's not appealing. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fons. I have Ms. Nahman to answer that question. Come on, folks, we've got a lot of business. Ms. Nahman, if you can answer at least the question regarding the senior $200,000 house and yada.
It's based on income and resources, and that's established by the Housing and Urban Development at the national level for this particular area. I won't comment on a specific situation. May I just remind everyone, we've already approved this language in 2014. The only thing we're doing tonight is putting it in a bylaw. The trust will continue as it is. Whether you vote this up or down, the trust continues because it was approved back in 2014. So it's just a housekeeping article to put it in a bylaw. That's all it is.
Thank you, Ms. Nahman. Mr. Wilson, and then I have Ms. Dubois.
I just want to give a little bit of reassurance to folks who, you know, not everybody's at every public meeting. The Affordable Housing Trust that began back in November has been incredibly active. They've presented to the Board of Selectmen their plans, including this bylaw. They didn't have to do this. They already had the authority given to them in 2014 by this body. But they have been proactive trying to make a bylaw that had regulations, had structure, was in fact responsive, and did disclose to the community what the Affordable Housing Trust was undertaking, and then also so that there was a framework in which they could then go to work below that. You talk about regulations, applications, et cetera. Until you have your frame, you don't build out the interior. And that's what this bylaw is. We have not had a group in town work on affordable housing like this group of Affordable Housing Trust is doing in my 12 and a half years of living in town. So if we are, in fact, a town that's committed to increasing our affordable housing above the approximately 3% that we currently have, we need to be supportive of this. We need to be supportive of the trust. We need to utilize funds that are intended for affordable housing and move them into the trust where we have committed experienced people looking to actually develop affordable units for people in town.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I now have, come on, folks, again, we've got a lot of business. Mr. Randall, you're next, then I have Ms. Romano.
Yeah, Bradford, Randall, 39 Winter Street. I move that we call the question.
Okay, well, I've got people queued, so thank you very much. I've got Ms. Romano, and I have Ms. Mumford and Ms. Dubois, and then we'll call the question if I, because I have them queued, and then I'll move that. So if you can hold one second. Ms. Romano, you were up.
As much as I love Heather, I'm actually Jean Goldman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
20 Howland Lane, and everybody confuses us.
It said Hayes over there. I thought you were her.
That's okay. Ms. Harlow actually had raised a point at the beginning where she was speaking about the seniors selling their homes, which Mr. Fons had also touched about. And I actually have an affordable housing application sitting in my car right now, partly because I'm a Realtor here in town, but also because my husband and I, if, if we were first-time homebuyers, would qualify for affordable housing with our family size. However, we are not first-time homebuyers, and we are immediately disqualified from the program because we are not first-time homebuyers. So I just wanted to clarify that there was a point raised regarding if a senior citizen sells their home and is sitting on equity and then goes into affordable housing, that that's not the way that the application that's sitting in the clerk's office right now reads. That application reads that you must be a first-time homebuyer to qualify for the program. So I support the efforts of the program. I don't support that it does not, it would not encompass everybody that would qualify for affordable housing if it wasn't for that stipulation. So I just wanted to make that point, and if there is something that I'm missing, I would appreciate any clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Council, if you can address the issue on the first-time buyers and the affordable.
Sure. There are different requirements for different, for different programs based upon the federal guidelines and the state guidelines. So the elderly qualifications, depending on whether it's low income, moderate income, or low to moderate income, have one set of guidelines. First-time homebuyers have another set of guidelines. Depends on family size, income, and asset limitations. So, none of which actually are addressed in the Affordable Housing Trust bylaw in front of you. That is a part of the program once it starts to be implemented.
Thank you. I have Ms. Mumford, Ms. Dubois, and then I'm moving Mr. Randall's question.
Yes, we need this. We should support, in theory, where we're headed. The problem that I have right now is the mechanics and the framework, and I do appreciate that people have talked. We need this framework. That at least has been approved. The issue that I have is written in the bylaw under 421-5 Powers of the Trustees, Section 6, that funds in excess of $25,000 have to go through the approval of the Board of Selectmen. I think that's an awful high amount of money. Further along in 421-6, under the Acts of Trustees, it says, funds to a single fiscal, in a single fiscal year, to any one party in a cumulative amount exceeding $100,000. So...
Where was that referenced?
421-6, Acts of the Trustees. So what...
That's what I mean. The $100,000 reference is where?
4-21-6, page 33.
Yes, it is.
So, clarification, any single expenditure over $25,000 needs approval of Board of Selectmen?
Thank you.
And then, any four would pass through until it hits, any four expenditures, $25,000 wouldn't hit the Selectmen again until it hits a cumulative $100,000 to any one individual. This was our money. This is our money. We have a say. We should have a say. And my only concern with this article is these amounts of money, that it's just going to go to the trustees that they can expend, $25,000 in one instance and up to $100,000 to one payer within a fiscal year. Those are my only concerns at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Mumford. Ms. Dubois is going to address the $100,000, the $25,000, and the $100,000. Can you address those first?
Could I address the other one first?
Sure.
Yeah. So, you know, as Lindsay said, we are, we're starting, okay? We, we can't do everything that nobody else has done before we have anything to do it with. So we're just getting going. But our commitment is to the people of the town and to the idea that we need social equity. So everybody has a place to live within their means. They can hold their head up, and they can be in peace. That's what we're going for here, okay? So we're trying to get there. The $25,000, so if we have any money at all, so say we have CPC money and we have money from a developer who couldn't get his affordable units built within the 40B, and so they give money to the trust in lieu of developing that, or anything else, anything over $25,000 needs Selectmen approval, anything. If we cumulatively, in one year, give anybody, say, a developer $100,000, or a designer, or a contractor, $100,000, that needs approval before it gets contracted by the Board of Selectmen. So we have eyes on top of eyes approving everything that we do along the way, and then, in addition to that, any CPC money, the money that you paid in your real estate taxes that's surcharged, needs to be accountable to the CPC and then to the State Department of Revenue. There is no freedom within here. There is nobody in doing this that is doing it for any other reason than to keep people in town who want to stay in town in the way they want to stay in town, whether it's helping people who don't have a house yet to live in town and to own something, or those of us who are getting older and, you know, don't work a five or a full-time job anymore and make $80,000 anymore and still support people, that we can do that too. So, it's working with state and federal guidelines, not on our own. We're not making anything up. Not our application, by the way. Not our application. We don't have any applications out. We're here to get set up. If you set us up, we will do a job that you will be proud of and also enable you to stay in town.
Thank you, Ms. Dubois. I have Mr. Randall's motion to amend. Do I have a second?
Motion to call the question.
Motion to call the question. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Randall. He's standing there. No! I won't move to move the question.
Matter of privilege.
So, one second. I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, a motion of privilege. Yes, Mr. Fons?
Yes, I was in the queue when the motion was presented, and everyone else that was in the queue was allowed to speak, and I was the only one that was not. And I was in the queue.
I had them queued, and you've already spoken, Mr. Fons, and that's the point of moving the question.
I understand that, but many other individuals...
Okay, so I'm denying your privilege. Okay, I'm denying your privilege.
I understand that. Thank you for considering it. However, many other people were allowed to...
So, Mr. Fons, you are not recognized. Sit down, please.
Thank you.
Move the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm going to count it, just to be safe, so everybody has their rights. All those that want to move the question and go to vote on the article, raise your card, please. Huh? Your, I don't know who does yours. Does Pete, does Dave or Paul? Well, Paul's on that side, so I don't know who's doing it. Is it Mr. Pepe or is it Paul? No, I didn't, never changed it. Who has the Finance Committee vote? Mr. Basler? Okay. Okay, Mr. Basler.
50.
Mr. Basler has 50. Mr. Pepe?
40.
Mr. Pepe has 50. Mr. Armstrong?
28.
Mr. Armstrong has 28. All those opposed, hold your yellow flags up. That means you want further debate. Did you count? Everybody behind you? Okay. Mr. Basler?
4.
Mr. Basler's 4. Mr. Pepe?
9.
Mr. Pepe is 9. Mr. Armstrong?
14.
14. Did you count? Everybody behind you, okay. Mr. Basler? Mr. Basler's 4. Mr. Pepe? Mr. Pepe is 9. Mr. Armstrong? 14. So the motion carries with 118, 4, and 27 against. So now we're moving the article. All those in favor of Article 32, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's do another count. Real quick. All those in favor of Article 32, raise your yellow cards. Mr. Basler? Mr. Basler's 47. Mr. Pepe? 36? Mr. Pepe is 36. Mr. Armstrong? Mr. Armstrong is 23. All those opposed to Article 32, nod their head. Mr. Basler? 11. Mr. Pepe? Mr. Pepe is 17. Mr. Armstrong? 20. Article 32 carries with 106, 4, and 48 against. Motion to reconsider? That being seconded. Ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of reconsideration, which is to reopen debate and reopen debate on Article 32, raise your cards. Oh, no, never mind, just yes. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? Motion to reconsider does not carry. And just so everybody knows, that article was debated for 42 minutes. Article 34?
33.
Oh, 33. Sorry, I jumped over one. Article 33. Thank you, Town Council. Yes.
Article 33, move that the town appropriate from the fiscal year 2018 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenue accounts for administrative expenses $12,850.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Having a second on that, Board of Selectmen has favorable action 500. Finance Committee has favorable action 500. Mr. Dalton, address your motion.
Yes, this is the annual amount that we can appropriate of the incoming funds for fiscal year 18 towards the administrative expenses for the Community Preservation Committee. We're allowed to allocate up to 5% of expected income, and that's what this amount represents. It mainly goes towards salary for the Executive Secretary and for other expenses that we incur. Any funds left over at the end of the year go back into the CPC fund.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 33? All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 34, Community Preservation Fund Appropriations. Mr. Dalton?
Move that the town reserve from the fiscal year 2018 Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenue amounts as follows. Open space, $25,700. Historic resources, $25,700. Community housing, $25,700, for a total of $77,100.
Having a second on that, Board of Selectmen has favorable action 500. Finance Committee has favorable action 500. Mr. Dalton?
This is also another annual item that we have to do with the CPA account. The state requires us to set aside at least 10% of the incoming, expected incoming funds for the fiscal year towards those three accounts. The open space also includes recreational use, and that's what these amounts are for.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Article 35, Community Preservation Fund Appropriation, Font School Window Restoration. Mr. Dalton?
Move that the sum of $9,800 be appropriated from available Community Preservation Act Historic Preservation Funds for the restoration of four windows in the Font School as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Said project to be under the supervision of the town at Kingston Board of Selectmen and Facilities Manager, with all expenses subject to final review and approval by the Community Preservation Committee prior to submittal for payment.
Having a second on that, we have, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen favorable 500. Finance Committee favorable 500. Mr. Dalton?
This is, this money would be for the finishing of a project that was started back in fiscal year 2010. Community Preservation Act projects started for that fiscal year for the restoration of the Font School itself. And the windows are the last item that are going to be done. Five of them have already been done. They're very expensive. I can list exactly what's going to be done on those windows, if you want to get into the details. But the Facilities Manager has been working with the Community Preservation Committee and the Historic Commission very closely on this, and has been utilizing funds very wisely and economically. This is what that is about.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Article 36, Community Preservation Fund Appropriation, Old Burial Ground Historic Cemetery Preservation Master Plan. Mr. Dalton?
Move that the sum of $40,000 be appropriated from available Community Preservation Act Historic Preservation Funds for the creation of Historic Cemetery Preservation Master Plan for the old burying ground as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Said project to be under the supervision of the town at Kingston Historical Commission and Facilities Manager, with all expenses subject to final review and approval by the Community Preservation Committee prior to submittal for payment.
Having a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen has favorable 500. The Finance Committee has unfavorable 140. Mr. Dalton?
If you've been reading the report in the last month there, we've been putting in an annual, non-annual, weekly article about some of the graves, historic graves that are in our old burying ground. I don't know how many people have walked through there, maybe at the last, at Memorial Day Parade there when they were doing the ceremony and the green, you might have looked over there and seen some of these monuments. There are many famous people, founders from this town, veterans, just average citizens buried in that cemetery, and it's in really poor disrepair. The gravestones are cracked and broken, the tombs are coming unmortared and open. Tombstones are overturned, growth is overgrowing the grave sites and everything else. It's, it's been not maintained properly over the many years. We would like to do what several other towns have done, the Commonwealth, and create a plan, a preservation, a restoration, preservation, and maintenance plan for the old burying ground. This plan would include a lot of, a lot of information, and I can list that later for you if you need it. But if you look at our, the handout that we had, I hope you had some for tonight for the CPA articles, it kind of briefly describes what goes on in that plan. The main point of doing this plan is so that we have the professionals tell us exactly what has to be done to the graveyard itself, to the individual tombs, the stones, research those stones, the people there, and present a prioritized plan for the restoration and repair of those historic memorials and grave sites so that we can attack those in the future. We hope to have this done with this tonight, if we pass this article tonight, achieve the plan within a year, and start work on that plan so that we can have that cemetery in good condition by our 300th anniversary. We hope to have it mainly done by Plymouth 2020. There's a lot, as we know, we're the...
Kingston has a 2022.
I'm sorry.
Sorry for the interruption. Go right ahead.
Chairman of the 2020 Committee. But for both of these events, these major events, that cemetery has so many valuable and historic graves in it that are deteriorating and washing away. We're losing this history every day. This amount here would go towards a consultant that would come in, and they would subconsult with landscape people, with people who repair these stones, the graves, and come up with this plan. We're fortunate, we have a scout right now, an Eagle Scout candidate, working on some of the research on the grave sites. We have a Girl Scout troop that attended the Historical Commission the other night, and they want to do research on these sites too. What we're really fearful of is the, I guess it's the, there's a medical motto, it says, "First off, do no harm." And people going in there arbitrarily cleaning graves, or scraping graves, or think they're helping out, are destroying, can destroy these, these very fragile items. So we want to make sure that we have a plan on how to do this, which ones need to be done, so when volunteers do come up, and we expect to have some volunteer work involved in this, the work that results from this plan, that we can direct them at the proper areas with the proper procedure and do it right.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Mrs. Sherman, Ms. Sherman?
Susan Sherman, 215 Main Street. I have a two-part question. Number one, who was supposed to maintain these? And where has that gone? And number two, it's my understanding, this is just a plan. And I've looked into it in a couple of the towns, and to redo it, it was $1.5 to $2 million to do this. And I'm not sure that we are prepared in Kingston to be looking at those numbers.
Well, the first part of the question is...
Mr. Dalton, yeah, if you can answer her question. No, that's all right regarding. Yep.
Fine. We're going to...
You can answer her question, the first question.
Regarding the maintenance of the property. It's received minimal maintenance, I believe, from the DPW as far as some cleanup in there every year. As far as the care of the graves and the trees, it's been, I guess, on an emergency basis. And I may, Mr. Basler, if he's here, might address that, but that's, that's all I know. It hasn't been attended to in the need that it requires.
Ms. Sherman, does that answer your question regarding, it hasn't been maintained?
The first part of the question, I'm not sure if it does answer. Who, who was supposed to do it? Were they not? I mean...
Yeah.
It's, it's something that would be addressed with this plan, though, as far as the maintenance, the future maintenance, and the plan for that maintenance, as to who will be doing that. But Mr. Basler is here.
One second. Mr. Gallagher, who has knowledge as well on it, is going to answer.
Yeah, I've had, I've had several people approach me over the last three or four years, asking me about, about the cemetery itself. A lot of, a lot of the grave sites are actually veterans that date back even to the Civil War, if I'm not mistaken. But at one point, the Evergreen Cemetery and the church had, had been taking care of it for the town, but it's actually the town's own, the town owns the cemetery, but has never really taken any ownership. That's really what it comes down to. We do own it, but we...
Did we not accept that road?
One second, Ms. Sherman, let him finish.
We, we own it, but we just have not preserved it or maintained it.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Basler, and then I'll go back. Mr. Basler?
Yes, the Department of Streets, Trees, and Parks is, maintenance over there consists of mowing, weed whacking, and removing some of the dead branches that fall off the trees. We do not repair gravestones, tombs, or any other items that are in that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Basler. Kind of answers it, Ms. Sherman. Ms. Sherman?
As far as the second part of...
Yep.
The, the other towns, of course, the, the amount of work and the size of the graves, graveyards vary tremendously, as you can imagine. So a million-dollar figure, a million-and-a-half-dollar figure for the work to be done, we don't know what it's going to cost, and we won't know until we do the plan and have that estimate done. If it does come to be a million dollars, it's not like we have to do that right away. It's not like we have to do everything right away. The whole point of the plan is to have a process so that if we get some money, maybe this $20,000 grant, it goes in the right spot at the right time for the thing that needs to be done, and that's $20,000 off of that million dollars. I don't know how much it's going to cost, or how much this plan, you know, will come up with what it's going to cost to get that place back up into shape, but it's providing us with a way to do it. So we don't have to spend that money right away. You don't have to spend any money in a year. But this is going to tell us what we can do, and if we have some money, where we should put it.
Maybe we could take...
Ms. Sherman?
Maybe we could take that $40,000 and put it into looking at the maintenance and taking care of it as opposed to a plan that we might not be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Mr. Fons?
Thank you, John Michael Fons, 16 May Avenue. I have a couple of issues here. One thing is, it's a little bit troubling to me to think that we could potentially spend $40,000, which is, in my opinion, a significant amount of money, to perhaps find out, okay, now we're looking at a million-and-a-half dollars if we want to go forward with this, and if we decide that we don't, which is perfectly fine and possible, we've just spent $40,000 to find out we can't do something that we initially wanted to do. So to me, that seems like a potential waste of money. So that's concerning to me, for one thing. Another thing that I wanted to mention is, you know, I think it's extremely important to, of course, recognize all of our veterans, those who have fallen, you know, people that were involved with founding the town and all that, that's extremely important. You know, I think our town, state, and country is in a big mess because a lot of us have actually failed to look back at what the founding fathers really did and what it was all about, and that's kind of how we've ended up in somewhat of a mess. So I think, you know, preserving that and actually understanding what that stood for is certainly important. So I'm not against that. But with that being said, I think one of my concerns too is that, you know, when we hear about different proposals in town, budgets, you know, departmental operating budgets, oftentimes we have what I see as somewhat of a laundry list of things that those departments are, you know, supposedly responsible for. So I think one of the things that I'm concerned is that I would be willing to bet, and again, I could be wrong, but I would be willing to bet that at some point with, you know, whether it's DPW, whoever is responsible for it, it's either been said or implied that, you know, this is part of what they do. So I think that many voters think that this is part of what is supposed to be done, and many times, we approve these budgets for these departments, assuming that they're going to do these things, and then, lo and behold, we're facing a situation where now we have a request for more money to do something which we thought we were already paying for. And to me, that's, that's concerning because it's potentially, you know, paying for something twice in the mind of the voter. Is that happening here? I don't know, but it's a concern of mine that I, that I'm trying to express here because I think it's important for the voters to think about these things and, you know, keep a logical head on our shoulders as we, as we approach this, and not just say, oh, it's for the veterans, let's do it. And again, I'm 1,000% behind the veterans. I mean, you know, who isn't, right? So it's not about being for or against veterans. It's about understanding the governmental process, the use of our funds, and, you know, all those interconnections and those inner workings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fons. I have, I mean, yeah.
Could I answer?
No, hold, I'm going to hold for a little bit. Mr. Harlow, it's Daniel, right?
Corlin Harlow, 31 Howland Lane. I was just wondering, that's all fine. How, how did you arrive at $40,000? And, yeah, that's, yeah, part one of the question. How do you arrive at $45,000 for a consultant?
$40,000 in estimate based upon a conversation with a couple consultants that do this work for an average-sized cemetery based upon what we expect to have over there. So it's an estimate.
Personally, that's a tremendous amount. I'm sorry.
Gentlemen, let me recognize, because you're both talking. Mr. Dalton, you done?
Yes, it's an estimate.
Mr. Harlow?
I just think that's a tremendous amount of money. We saw, I believe it was last year or two years ago, we appropriated $40,000, I believe, for Gray's Beach, and I think that sum of money was ridiculous, especially what we've seen now proposed. I believe the amount of money can be significantly less, even if we do need a consultant. I'm not going to make a motion, but I believe we could do it for significantly less than $40,000, my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow, and I'll just let you know, Town Council indicated that we do also have to follow procurement laws anyhow, so when it goes out, it will go out for bid in that. So this is looking at the general sum. I have Mr. Wilson, and then Mr. Boncheck, and then I have Mr. Harlow.
Yeah, just quickly...
I am, but they were in line later. Go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Wilson.
I absolutely understand that this is, of all of our articles, I'd call it a discretionary expense. And this is something that maybe you look at and you say, is this the right year for it? Is it not the right year? I completely respect that. I think the selectmen were favorable and support this because there really is a push, and we've heard from you, the community, about preserving our history, understanding who we are as a community, honoring those that came before us, et cetera. We had the Memorial Day Parade, and, you know, one of the things that preceded that was Mr. Harbison had come to the selectman's office and pointed out that two of the flagpoles at our war memorials were in total disrepair. at our war memorials were in total disrepair, paint peeling, in terrible shape. There was an American flag that had ripped off and was up in a tree, and that that's not the kind of community that he wanted us to be. And so we got the trucks out there and we painted those flagpoles. And we got that flag out of the tree. And people noticed and appreciated that we, we cared as a town and that someone stood up for what was right. And, you know, this is the same type of article. This is about preserving our history. You go to Tremont Street in Boston, the old granary burying ground is one of the most popular tourist sites in Boston, to look at the old graves, to remember who came before and who founded our town. Obviously, it takes money to do stuff. These are 300-year-old, 200-year-old graves at times. It takes expertise. It's going to cost money. We're going to put it out to bid. We, if we only allocate 15,000 and the bid comes in at 17,000, we don't have the funds to do it. If we allocate 40 because we got some estimates, hopefully it's significantly less, and that's what we will spend. But if it's something that the town is, is supportive of, I certainly think the selectmen are supportive of preserving our history.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Boncheck?
Peter Boncheck, 33 Howland Estates, Kingston. You know, I like the idea of doing this. I just don't understand why every time we need to go do something, let's go hire consultants. Let's go do this. Whatever happened to people doing things on, you know, doing it themselves? It's always about spending money for consultants. We come out here, we have highly educated, highly intelligent people. We have a Historic Commission who obviously is really concerned about this. Why, you know, what's it really take to go out and plan a cemetery that's already in place, go out there and, and actually do it on our own, instead of to hire, spend $40,000 to have somebody tell us that it's probably going to cost us a million, million and a half, $2 million? You know, you can find anything on YouTube today will tell you how to, how to clean a gravestone and do it correctly. I just saw a news clip the other day where there's a gentleman, I think he's out in the Western Park Estate for three years, he's doing it himself, he's cleaning all these gravestones, and they look fantastic. So my idea, again, is why spend the 40,000 when we have enough people in town that we should be able to get them together if they're really concerned about it, is to go out there and, and save that money and use it for something else that, that we could use for that we can't do it ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boncheck. Mr. Harlow?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland Lane. Question, quick comment. Not belaboring the $40,000, I just think it's interesting that every time we get a consultant, our estimates always come in exactly at $40,000. It just seems like, that's just like, hey, let's throw 40,000 at it. So that being said, and they always get approved, too, and then that's what we end up paying. But that being said, the FinCom had a vote of, I think it was 1 for 0. Could we get an explanation, please? That'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Ms. McKinnon?
Good evening, everyone. First, let me start by saying that the, the town is fortunate that we have an incredible group of volunteers who serve on lots and lots of different committees, the CPC being one of them. And it takes a great deal of time, commitment, and contribution. So I want to thank you for, for all of the work that you do. Notwithstanding, other committees also have jobs to do, and the Finance Committee is one of them. And one of the jobs that we do is that we take a look at all money-related articles and, and come up with a recommendation. We do that by asking questions. We do that by analyzing fact patterns. We do that by taking a look at our own experiences. And one of the things that, that happened is, has sort of already been mentioned, during our conversations with the CPC committee, one of our first questions was, well, what do you expect the study to reveal? What kind of scope of work and, and what kind of cost estimates would you think would come out of this $40,000 consulting study? And, and the answer was, we don't know. And, and that concerns us because in the research that we did on restoration projects, and there have been a couple dozen or so in the state of Massachusetts, if, using CPC funds, you can take a look at them on the CPC website. In, in doing some research, just a broad brush stroke over some other communities, what we kept finding time and time again was that these projects were anywhere from 3/4 of a million up to, to $2 million. And it concerned us because we're talking about making a $40,000 investment, which is not insignificant. And are we prepared for the results of those study? Are we prepared to address the results of those study? Or will the results of those study become obsolete by the time that we have any kind of financing strategy to do something about it? A couple of other things that we took a look at is oftentimes, these studies reveal that there are services that are needed in order to do the proper restoration. One of the things that I found interesting was that a lot of them encompass aerial photography so that we can get the boundaries and, and grave sites properly marked. The other thing that they often included was GPR, Ground Penetrating Radar. Has anyone ever heard of this before?
Yes.
Yeah? Oh, okay. It's like an ultrasound machine, if I can sort of simplify it a little bit. An ultrasound machine that looks under the ground to see whether there are grave sites that are not marked, or there's human remains, or there's caskets, or, or what have you. And, and you never know what's under the earth. And so Sudbury, for example, had undertaken a restoration project for a moderately-sized cemetery, and they were ready to embark on some sort of restoration project until they had this GPR service conducted. And what they found was that there were 975 unmarked tombs under the ground, which, of course, then changed radically the scope of the services that they needed to provide. So our concern with the Finance Committee was, was taking a look at these projects. And we looked, there were some that were in New Hampshire that we analyzed. There were a couple in Massachusetts, one that's nearby is Braintree. Their study came back and it was a $750,000 restoration project for about 27 grave sites. So our concern is to make sure that we are prepared for the results of that study and to prepare for some sort of financing strategy that would go along with that. And we're not sure how that's going to happen. So that was our concern.
Thank you, Mrs. McKinnon. Mr. Martin, and then I have the, yep.
Bill Martin, 25, went to street Kingston. As a veteran's agent for the last few years, I've had a number of Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts come in and talk to me about projects. One of them has been with the cemetery. Well, not one of them, several of them have been with the, the cemeteries. There are two cemeteries there for those who don't know it. There is the town-owned cemetery right behind the Congregational Church and leading up to the green. And then there's the Evergreen Cemetery. The Evergreen Cemetery is reasonably well-maintained. The trustees hired his service. The trustees hired service used to take care of the town-owned one for many years. But it hasn't done it in all these many years because it hasn't got paid by the town. We never, we never continued to pay it, so they stopped doing it. Anyway, that happened a long time ago before any of us were around. What I want to say here is the Boy Scouts go over there, they clean it up. Just about every year, there's somebody in there cleaning it up. And one of the requirements I throw on them, beat on them, and lay on them is, do not touch a tombstone. Do not. If a tombstone's fallen over, you are not to pick it up. If it's split, you are not to try to put it together. Because you're not experts, I don't want you messing it up. We will try to find the money at some time to do it. And to that end, I have talked with some of the people in town. And I've gotten commitment from the, from Mr. Bazler, that his department will be up there a little bit more and doing it. Because there's a limit to what the Boy Scouts can do. I won't let them cut trees. I mean, I just have to be, you have to allow for safety. I don't want somebody hurt under there because the Boy Scout goes down there and he tries to do something he shouldn't do, and he gets hurt. So I want you to know that this is a serious problem. We haven't dealt with it. We haven't dealt with it in 40, 50 years. It's time we did do something about it. It's time we picked it up and brought it together, fixed it up, made it look right and presentable, and be proud of the fact that Kingston has a history back then. The current Boy Scout is going to put, give me the names and the location of every grave that's a veteran's grave in both cemeteries, all three cemeteries, as a matter of fact, going up to St. Joseph Cemetery. That's his charge this year. But it is not to clean up the cemetery. So just to disavow you, it won't be cleaned with his efforts this year. I, I would like you to vote this article, and let's, let's get moving on keeping our history together.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Sandy Richter, for Gray's Beach Road. I also work for the town of Middleborough, and I want to say they have a very active committee in the town of Middleborough, the Friends of the Middleborough Cemeteries Group. I've worked with them in my capacity in the town of Middleborough. And I just want to let you know that there are many avenues of funding for the outcome of this study. And there are many ways to raise funds for that as well. So while I respect everyone's concern about what's going to happen when you get this study, and I also understand that the study may not cost all the way to $40,000. We don't know what we've got, and it's true, like any house, you don't know what you've got until you start digging into it. But in this case, I think I would vote for this as a good beginning to try to understand what it would take to restore the historic nature and, and preserve what we have in this really historic artifact for the, the time, for the history of Kingston. And we're coming up on 2020, and Kingston's 300th as well. So I, I just encourage everyone to vote for it, and let's see what we've got, and then take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. I now have Ms. Gallagher, and then Mr. Tanian, if you can, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to briefly make a point that I think we've been kind of walking around and, try to focus our minds on why this is important. When Kingston was founded, it was a church parish. And it was a, a breakaway from Plymouth because it was really pretty far to go to church there. And when there were enough people here that wanted their own minister, they got a grant that was the, the soul of the beginning of town. And that grant included the burial ground. That burial ground is like the oldest part of Kingston. And the people that are buried there deserve our respect. And $40,000 isn't a lot of money to employ professionals to study its condition and tell us just how badly we've neglected it. I mean, someone asked, who's supposed to take care of it? You know, I bet they're buried someplace else. But the point really is, we're spending too much time talking about something that we should realize should be central to our town pride. And that's to really honor where we came from and carry on what we were supposed to do, which was to take care of that, as well as to keep a minister in 1717. But now you don't have to do that anymore. That's somebody else's job.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Mr. Tanian? Come on, I wanted you queued up. Then I have Mr. Dalton, Mr. Fauntz, and then I have you.
I was here before he was.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm calling them, so I either missed you, whatever, that's the order I'm calling. Mr. Tanian?
Dana Tanian, 7 Claring Farm Road. There are no perfect answers to some issues. That being said, some of the issues can't be judged just on dollar amounts alone. And I'd just like to make the point that who knows to what extent the people who are resting there loved this community, worked here, built this community. I just think, as a member of the Finance Committee, I am always, always concerned with the impact of how we spend our money and how it affects each one of us. I'm a taxpayer just like you guys. But I think I, I'm supporting this because I think it provides a good measure of respect for those people who, in all likelihood, gave so much to this community. So I would hope that you support it. And again, as a member of the Finance Committee, I in no way am very flip about voting for things or supporting things that are going to provide a burden for our taxpayers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Tanian. Mr. Dalton?
Several people have eloquently put it, why we should be doing this. I don't have too much more to add to that. There are a lot of, a lot of points raised that I could rebut or I have answers for. But the biggest one I tell my students at the school, the academy, is in bridge resource management, failure to plan, planning to fail. We want a good plan, get the cemetery back up into shape, and take care of it properly. That's, that's my-
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, Mr. Fauntz.
Thank you, John Michael Fauntz, 16 May Avenue. I just wanted to, again, remind the voters that, in my opinion, this is somewhat of a little bit of a complicated article because it's twofold, right? So we have to think about two different things at the same time, one being $40,000 for the study. But the other thing, which I would argue which is much more important, is again, what is this going to cost in the future? And is that cost possible for us to absorb as taxpayers? We have a lot of things on the table. There's been talk about police stations, libraries, et cetera, a lot of money that's being looked to be spent in this town. Again, I think we need to respect our history, absolutely. But this is a twofold issue. I think it's pretty clear that many people here have no problem with spending town money. That's fine. That's your right as a voter to support that. But if you are one of those individuals who does tend to support spending money in town, you should be thinking about the fact that you may be spending $40,000 that will result in nothing, potentially. I would also remind you that we're hearing talk of, well, it might not cost the full $40,000. I think we all know as taxpayers that if it costs 10 and we've allocated 40, guess what? We're not getting 30 back. It's going someplace else. So if it costs less than 40, that does not comfort me. We've allocated the funds. It's out of our pockets. Okay? That's one thing. Another thing is, is that I think if we look into the future and look ahead, I think we can foresee that when it comes time to allocate funds after the study has been done and, and all that, part of the arguments that we'll hear in favor of this will be, we've already spent $40,000 on the study. To me, that's some backwards thinking, in my opinion. And again, I can't stress enough my respect for our history, for our veterans, for all that. And I'm not saying, don't do something about it. What I am saying is the way we're going about it is concerning to me. And I think that these questions need to be going through our minds as voters. We need to vote more with our minds and less with our hearts. It's very easy to just say, yay, veterans, let's do it! You know, that's how I feel. That's how I feel. But I myself exercise a certain degree of emotional control when it comes to voting to understand what the ramifications are. And I'll end with this. We've heard a lot about being proud of the history, Kingston, the whole thing, the people that founded this town. I would just ask you this. When you're somewhere out in Western Mass because you couldn't afford to stay in Kingston, are you going to be comforted by the fact that you took care of this project? Are you going to be proud of the Kingston burial ground when you're someplace else where you don't want to be because you couldn't afford to stay in town? That needs to be considered as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fauntz. Ma'am?
Yes, Deb Smith. And yet, I don't see the sky falling just because I went to the doctor and found out I need to take care of something now before it gets worse. The one thing to elaborate on financing is we are in an age where raising money is only limited by our imagination. There are a lot of interests going into this. We have the historical preservation. We have tourism. We have green use. Look at the psychological studies showing that having just the green growth is good for your mental health. We also have so many things going into this. There are grants for historical preservation. There are grants for tourism. There are grants for green use. And folks, this is the age of crowdsourcing. This is the age where we can go, maybe start a fund online and say, hey, we want to fix this. Look who's buried here. We've got some Brewsters and Bradford's, and look who else. There's a lot of people here in town who have ancestors buried in that cemetery, and some of people who don't. And yet, they walk through that place enjoying the peaceful tranquility. That moment, that center of quiet. center of quiet that these cemeteries represent. So, you know, hey, given how much I-bonds give back, they're 30-year bonds, I believe, and I'd be willing to give $20 now just to start a small account with an I-bond and see how many people else would give it. It would give back some interest, plus that is figured with the cost of, oh, whatever the going inflation rate, plus some amount. It's a trickle, but trickles, you get enough trickles together, you get a river. You know, the sky is not going to fall just because we spend $40,000. And I agree on that one point. We can't justify spending what we find because we spent the $40,000. We could start now and prepare what if we do need to do with. And we already know that there's going to need fixing. Let's not go wailing, well, that there might be money that we have to spend, because this is a problem with everything we've talked about, is what kind of imagination are we going to bring to the table to pay for these? We don't have to have the taxpayers pay for everything. There's a lot of stuff out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norman?
Wrightford Norman, 38 Summer Street. I'm also the Facilities Manager for the town. I just want to make the point that in order for us to be eligible, oh, woman got up and spoke about getting funds from other resources, in order to be eligible for those grants and funds, we need a report and we need a study. So if you decide to do this now, we will need this study. If you decide to do it later, we will. If not, we will not be eligible for any grants, because in order to put in for those grants that come from the federal government, organizations, or people that restore cemeteries, we need a study that specifically says what we're going to do. And they won't allow us to use the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, or our own employees, because the work that's going to be done there is much more technical than we're able to do with our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Ms. McFarland? And then I have Mr. Dalton, and then I'll go back over.
I think we're losing track of the point that this money has already been set aside in a fund that is regulated by the Community Preservation Act. We voted as a town to fund historic, open space, and affordable housing projects by giving up some of our taxes each year to do so. And if anything meets the historic definition of the Community Preservation Act, it's this cemetery. And I urge you, please, to support this. It's something that we need to do. And I don't, I just don't see why there's so much rhetoric about something that we can only spend the money on these three types of things: open space, community housing, and historic preservation. And this is historic preservation. So please support this.
Thank you. Ms. DeFonce, I was limiting people to twice, so you've been up twice already, so do you have new information only?
No, that's fine. I'll yield. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Sir, I'm calling you. Come on, folks, let's move this along.
David Kenny would like to move the question.
Okay. So sir, are you moving the question as well?
Yep.
Thank you. So I'm not even going to move the question. It's already done. No more debates going on. All those in favor now are moving Article 36. I've got to put my glasses on. That's the right number, right? Yeah? Article 36. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. That's not a two-third, right? No, no, we're done.
Thank you.
Moving on to... No, that was a full vote. I said moving Article 36. I said, there's not moving the question because there's no more debate.
Well, if we were both confused, can you just clarify to everyone?
Let's revote it. Did everybody else understand that I was moving the article?
Yes.
Then let's redo it, folks. We're not moving the question. There was no more debate. Nobody else was at the mics, okay? Moving Article 36. This is the CPC article for the old burial ground, as you all know. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Majority carries. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 37, Community Preservation Fund Appropriations, Funding of the Kingston Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Ms. Lenatra?
Thank you. Move that the sum of $600,000 be appropriated from the available Community Preservation Act Community Housing Funds, a sum of money for transfer to the Kingston Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the planning and creation of community housing within the town of Kingston. All transferred funds shall be subject to a signed grant agreement, Town of Kingston, Massachusetts Community Preservation Act Grant Agreement for Kingston Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Among the Kingston Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund trustees, the Kingston Board of Selectmen, and the Kingston Community Preservation Committee, that further describes required practices and expectations of the use of the funds. Funds transferred to the Kingston Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund will be under the supervision of the Town of Kingston Municipal Housing, Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund trustees.
Having a second on those, I have Board of Selectmen is favorable 500. Finance Committee is favorable 500. Ms. Lenatra, can you address your motion?
Yes. This is just to provide the funding for the Kingston Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund so that the trustees of that fund can seek and provide ways to increase affordable housing within the town of Kingston.
Thank you, Ms. Lenatra. Mr. Harlow?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland Lane. Has the grant agreement been signed yet?
Yes. Ms. Lenatra?
Yes.
It has been signed? Okay, thank you. Actually, sorry, follow-up question.
Yes.
How has it been signed if they haven't been approved? If the affordable housing and whatnot hasn't been approved until apparently tonight?
Actually, no. Town Council will answer that because the Affordable Housing Committee was in place. This, with the bylaw was passed tonight.
Okay.
So the trust already existed.
That's correct. The trust already existed.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, sorry.
Hi, Jess Kramer, 10 Grace Beach Road. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm backing into some of these numbers, but it looks like the annual revenue for the CPA fund is about $257,000, and only 65% of that is undesignated. 30% goes to three different funds, a 10% each, and 5% is administrative. So that looks like $167,000 per year is in this undesignated pool. So this $600,000 amount is almost four years' worth of accumulated CPA funds. And it makes me uncomfortable thinking about, in one lump sum, handing that much over. So my questions are, first, what has the Affordable Housing Trust Fund been doing with the allocation of the 10% every year? What is that balance of that accumulation? And then what would be remaining in the CPA funds if this money was appropriated towards the affordable housing?
Thank you. Town Council, can you actually answer, because there's no Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Right. So the money that's in the CPA for affordable housing isn't in the control of the Affordable Housing Trust until this town meeting authorizes the appropriation to do that. So that's not where it is. I don't know what the balance is.
I'm going to have Ms. Lenatra answer that.
Right. So it's within the CPA.
So this is releasing money that's already been assigned to the affordable housing just so that they can actually do it? Is the accumulation of that 10% every year, it's in a separate pool? Is that correct, or am I...
Is that what she's indicating? Yes.
Yes. Correct.
So this is not from that free pool of CPA funds? That's not appropriated.
In other words, Ms. Lenatra, can you answer that in regard to the breakdown of the...
So there has been, there's money in the CPC funds that has not been touched for affordable housing. So I believe the balance, correct, if I'm wrong, is 629, approximately 629, $629,000.
So there'll be $29,000 remaining after this appropriation?
Correct. In that, in CPA funds, in that account, for affordable housing, right? In that bucket.
For, okay. So it's not from, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Font.
I just want a clarification. How does this trust fund relate to the bylaw that we previously voted on in terms... So does the trust already exist? Did we just make the trust exist via the vote for the bylaw? Or... I'm trying to understand that.
Certainly. Town Council, can you explain the existence of...
So I'll go back to the example that Mr. Wilson gave earlier. So it's kind of like building a structure. So in 2014, town meeting adopted the trust, and I think it was Article 3 in 2014. After you have the trust, you have to have the next layer, which is the bylaw that provides more specifics about what can happen. That was just passed.
Okay.
And then the Affordable Housing Trust will then provide more specifics and adopt its own regulations moving forward.
So just to clarify, we've literally, like, I don't know, a half hour ago basically set up what this trust can do, and now we're already throwing $600,000 on it? Is that correct?
No, the trust existed since 2014 and had a general framework.
Okay, I understand it's existed, but as you just said, the bylaw further set forth the details in terms of what it can do, correct?
That's correct.
So we've just voted a half an hour ago on the details of what this trust can do, and now we're throwing $600,000 at it? Is that correct?
Now the request is to appropriate $600,000 to it, yes.
Okay, sorry, I call it throwing it at it, but yes, appropriating. Sorry, thank you. So that's correct then, basically? Would you, is that safe to say?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
Okay. I for one don't feel comfortable with that as a voter, but that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
The trust has been in existence since 2014. Yes, everybody's clear about that. Sir?
Good evening. Doug Dondaro, 14 Copper Beach Drive. I'm blown away at this figure, $600,000. I was at the town meeting a couple nights ago, and I heard, excuse me, our chairman, the Finance Committee, say, we've got to slow down what we're doing. This, to me, looks like we're starting a whole other department: salaries, offices. CPA, to the best of my knowledge, is shrinking by the state. When we first got involved, I think there was a 3% match from the state. Now I think it's 1%. I think this is, I thought we needed a fire, a police station. I didn't think we needed more affordable housing. I'd ask for this to be tabled. Another point of this is, some of this is going on at the end of my street, and not one person on this committee got in touch with one person on my street.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is...
I've got questions. I think it should be tabled.
Everybody has the right to have a voice and to state their voice. If you want to respond and you want to rebut, get in line or raise your hand.
Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you, sir. All right. So are you moving the table to table it? Are you doing that as a formal motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Then come back down. Let me just go back for one second. I always forget if that's debatable. And that's, no, okay. It's not debatable, yes. So he's moving to table this, which would mean that it would not be voted on. It would go on the wayside, so to speak. Yes?
But Mr. Dondaro spoke inaccurate things when he was debating.
All right, it's not a debatable article. So I get what you're saying, and you're saying a point of order that all of his information wasn't correct.
He did, one time.
He did, and he can. He started by saying, I want to... It is not debatable. He got up, he said, I want to table, and then he talked. And that is approvable, and as moderator, I'm ruling that acceptable. So we now have a motion to table. I think I got a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so I have a second on it. This is all, the, we're now going to vote this. This is a two-third vote, ladies and gentlemen. It requires a supermajority, as we call it. So I'm just going to move right to the card counting. So all those in favor of tabling it and putting it on the wayside, raise your yellow cards, please. Table, putting it on, it will not be voted.
Hey, Janet?
Yes?
Paul's not in the room.
Pardon me?
Paul's not in the room.
Oh, one second.
I'll go find him.
Is he, is he right out there, Tammy? If he's not, I'll swear you in. Oh, well, she's already voted. She's done it before, folks, that's why she can do it. Sorry, Mr. Bazla. Come down, we're voting. Again, all those in favor of the motion to table, it's going to require a two-third vote, say aye. Mr. Bazla?
20.
Mr. Bazla's 20. Mr. Pepe?
15.
Mr. Pepe's 15. Mr. Armstrong?
25.
I'm sorry.
25.
Mr. Armstrong is 25. All those opposed that want to continue debate and want to vote the article, raise your Mr. Bazla?
41.
Mr. Bazla's 41. Mr. Pepe?
49.
Mr. Pepe is 29. Mr. Armstrong?
26.
Mr. Armstrong is 26. Ladies and gentlemen, did not carry with 60 in favor and 96 in opposition, so the motion to table is not, does not carry. Now, back on for debate, I had Ms. Dubois and then Ms. Landis-Nalman, okay? And then I think Mr. Dalton was up, and then I'll go over to you.
Hi there, and thank you very much. So the money's in the account. You raised it since 2005. It's been accruing for the purpose of creating affordable housing in the town of Kingston. The CPC has not been able to use those funds because it's a big job, okay? It's a tough thing, and they're doing recreation, historic, open space. So it's a hard thing. So that's why in 2014, the trust was created. But the problem is, we can't make something out of nothing. So in this day and age, we need funding in order to produce. We have since last fall been researching available projects. We probably have several million dollars' worth of available projects, and that would only get us to developing them. There are really good projects that we can build in town, but we can't do it with nothing. The money's there. It can only be used for affordable housing. We're here as a team to create affordable housing. The money doesn't go to any staff. There's no expenses like that. Yes, we will hire experts to do design. Yes, we will have experts to do surveys. Yes, we will have experts to clean up hazardous waste sites, to be able to create affordable housing in Kingston that every single one of you would like to have.
Thank you, Mr. Dubois.
There's really no point in having created this Affordable Housing Trust if you don't give us anything to work with. In other words, it's a shallow shell with no point in you having an affordable trust. Those of us who are committed to affordable housing have spent a good deal of our personal time trying to learn what would be best for this town. We are all citizens, just like you, working for citizens like you to have affordable homes in our community. We're at a little over 3%. The state requires 10% before we can not have to deal with 40B projects in town. Please allow us to do our job. $600,000 doesn't go very far, but it's been sitting there with nobody using it. Allow us to use it. As we talked about in the prior article, we can't spend more than $25,000 without going to the Board of Selectmen for their concurrence on what we're proposing. If you're at all involved with real estate, you know $600,000 doesn't go very far. We ask that you please give us this opportunity. Otherwise, there's really no point in having an Affordable Housing Trust in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Craig Dalton, 11 Elmhurst Street, Chair of the CPC. We just set aside $26,000 for affordable housing because we're required to tonight into the CPA fund. We've had this, as they said, for many years going into the account. We've had, like, one project, basically, that was funded, partially funded with our funds. Several other projects were raised and fell flat and didn't material. Several other projects were raised and fell, fell flat and didn't materialize. So, we haven't been able to do much with this money that's been accumulating in the CPA account. And when this came along, the trust came along, we thought it's a great way to get people, get this thing moving and start providing affordable housing. When the committee was formed, we have a bunch of good volunteers there, they're the kids, they've been working, they've been working a lot over the last few months here in projects, even without any funding. They need this money, they need it to front the projects that they're coming through to put affordable housing into Kingston and I hope you support this.
Thank you. Ms. Boyer?
Susan Boyer, 249 Main Street. I'm also a member of the planning board and a member of the CPC. I, I think it's really important to remember that in 2014, we did in fact vote in the trust. It took three years for five individuals to step forward, to even begin to initiate this process. That's a long time to have said we thought this was important. Now, we have an opportunity to fund those individuals who stepped forward out of all of the people in town who could have volunteered and decided not to. This is an opportunity to give them, to appropriate the money that the CPA has set aside. Yes, $600,000 sounds like a lot of money, but up until now, we had absolutely no mechanism in which to fund anything. We said affordable housing was important. People who came to the master plan charrette meetings said affordable housing was important. If we don't fund them, they will be unable to proceed. There are no projects, by the way, that have been set in stone, determined, none. There's no roads, there's no housing, there's no developer, there's no project yet, because they have no ability to do so. They've done research, they've done investigation, they've looked into what other towns, they've done a lot of work ahead of time. But if we refuse them this money, that will end the Affordable Housing Trust and we will have no mechanism, none, for first-time home buyers, for people who are schoolteachers, for people who want to move to Kingston but can't afford to. It will be gone and we will not have another opportunity and that money will sit in the CPA. Sit. It will not be appropriate anywhere else, it will not be given to any other committee, it will not be put anywhere, it will simply stay there. So I urge you to vote this.
Thank you, Ms. Boyer. Sir?
Hi, my name's Roger Legreca, I'm from 67 Shore Drive. I've been in businesses town for over 50 years and I just want to explain one thing to you. The businesses in this town have been taxed so heavily over the last five years, I don't think we, this town could continue to say yes, because I really feel that the businessmen in this town have maxed out. So I'm saying to you, if you say yes today, I hope you can afford it on your tax bill, not ours.
Thank you, Mr. Legreca. Come on, folks. Mr. Fons?
Uh, somewhat in line with what the last gentleman just said, I just wanted to ask a quick question and then just a short comment.
Ask the question, come on.
Okay, thank you. These funds, how many houses do we foreseeably see being built with these funds? And I'm not going to hold you to number, just approximately, how many houses do you think could be built with these funds?
Does anybody want to address that or, do you want to answer more than likely?
Um, let's see. I think the, the, I think there's a misconception. We do not think that we can build the several hundred affordable homes that we need in Kingston with $600,000. We also-
That's not the question.
I'm sorry, I'm just calling-
We, we also know that we can't do it with anything. What we expect is that we will use that $600,000 to leverage a lot more money for this town. That's what we expect. So, for you, for, for, for me to answer your question, I can't, because we haven't been able to develop any plans and I can't even, you know, I, 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 I'm too nervous about trying to throw out a number because I don't think it's fair. It's not fair to you and it's not fair to me. But we know that we need several hundred homes, at the very minimum, to make our percentage grow. And we also know that we can't do it only with CPC funds. We are not, Mr. Legreca, asking for more money from the businesses or the taxpayer in town. That money is in the bank. We're not asking you to come up with anything extra that's in a fund, that's sitting in whatever bank the town treasurer has it invested in and what we want to do is shift it over into another account in the town treasurer's office to give us the, the, the capacity to say to the mass housing, to the LEP, to the workforce housing, to all of them, we have money and we want to plan on this property, whatever that property may be, and we have the capacity to pull it off. And we will get those funds. You know why? Because it's the governor's priority. It's Mass Housing Partnership's priority. It's the priority of a lot of people in town because they know, and in the state, because they know that we're not getting wealthier. We need affordable housing and this is the only way to create it.
Thank you. Mr. Fons?
If I may just briefly, I totally respect your inability to tell us a specific number and if, if you can't, I wouldn't expect you to try to if, if it's not possible right now, so I respect that. However, the only reason I asked for, for a number is, is not because I want to hold you to a number, but because I'm trying to draw a comparison to, to the following, okay? Let's say it's the full percentage that we're required, which I believe is 10%, is that correct? So 10%. So that means 90% of the town is not affordable housing if, if 10%, let's say we reach the 10%.
That's not how it works, Mr. Fons.
Okay, well, the point I'm trying to make is, we all want to talk about affordable housing and how great it is to help folks and provide something that's more, you know, affordable and all that. What about the rest of the town? You know, how about we make Kingston more affordable for everyone via reducing our expending and our taxes? You know, the second biggest bill I have in my home past my mortgage is my real estate tax. So, we all want to help people, make it affordable, let's make it affordable for everybody by reducing our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fons. I now have Mrs. Harlow and then Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. On the $600,000, is that going to be taxed?
Can't hear you. Maybe move a little bit closer to the mic or move it, there you go, perfect.
Will the $600,000 be taxed?
Taxed how? You mean like, real estate taxed?
No, just passage of money being transferred from one place to another, it's a source of income.
No, no, no. The answer is no.
Okay, fine, thank you, very well.
Pine, please let me just, no, it is not taxed. It's a transfer from a fund under CPC into the trust. That's it. Non-taxable transfer.
Sorry. So you have the $600,000 here and then you have the $300,000 for the two parcels of land that the affordable housing is requesting as well. So that's $100,000 less than a million. So basically, the request is eight hundred, I'm sorry, $900,000. That's a sizable amount of money. The, although the land isn't in money, but it's land that's valued at $300,000. $600,000-
Well, addressing this one right now, Mrs. Harlow, so when we get to the next future ones regarding the transfer of property-
I like to put things in perspective, thank you.
I understand, you covered it, so now move on.
So, the, the problem, as I see it, is $600,000, I don't know if that will afford you lawyers, advisors, purchase of land, architects, builders, contractors. So I'm not saying you should get more money, believe me, but I think that you really have to consider the town giving $600,000, that's going to be eaten up pretty quickly, what will happen when that $600,000 is gone?
Thank you, Mrs. Harlow.
No, I'm asking a question.
Well, Mrs. Harlow, you're, you're making a comment.
No, I'm asking a question, where were that $600,000? If that's gone, where will more money come?
Ms. Dubois already answered that, Mass Housing Partnership, there's other places that they'll be seeking funding from. She answered that and just prior to you getting up.
Great, I heard-
Okay?
I heard her, thank you very much. I'm concerned about the town being hidden again.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
My sentiment is the same, $600,000 just seems to be a lot of money. I understand what the Affordable Housing Plan is going to do, what the trust is going to do and how, how they're going to work it. What I don't get is, is that why are we going to allocate $600,000 when there aren't any specific plans that are set in motion for them to buy land and to, and to set it up? Nothing is set in stone here. This is $600,000 that they want, that they, that they don't have specific projects, specific plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, ma'am.
Jackie Creed, Ebony, 17 Tarkhill Road. In Article 32, in quotes, the trust is, we just voted on bylaws-
Mm-hmm.
-for the Town of Kingston Affordable Housing Trust Fund and in this article, we're giving money to the Kingston Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Are there two different entities or is it an error or what, what's the difference in the two names?
Good question, but town council answered, it's the same entity under the Municipal Management Act that just went in, they changed the name, so it's just a matter of it's the exact same entity.
Okay, thank you.
Just a new name. It was Ebony. Um, sir?
Roger Legreca again, 67 Shore Drive. I just want everybody to realize that the $600,000 is a drop in the bucket compared to two more policemen, four more firemen, two more ambulance drivers and maybe another school, because we will fill it up, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legreca. I have Ms. Sherman, then I have Ms. Mumford and Mr. Wilson.
To the point, through the moderator, of Mrs. Boyer, I'm still unclear what this is being used for. I understand it is not for the senior who is selling her home or his home and moving into a less expensive home. Am I right on that?
Um, Ms. Dubois, sorry, go ahead.
Not necessarily. And of course, we don't know because it's theoretical. The idea is to help people who need help that have 80% of the median income. So, if you have, let's say, a couple hundred dol, $1,000 from selling a home that you have, but you have social security for an income, you're not going to be having 80%, even 80% of what, you know, your neighbor might be bringing home a year and so you're eligible. The question is, do we have enough housing for those people? And, and so what our role is, is to make enough housing for those people. So that's what it is. So theoretically, you would be eligible if you don't have a million dollars in the stock market that can, you know, that, that produces an annual income that is 100% or more of the median income.
Let me ask the second part of that question. Is it at least for Kingston residents or is it just, are we bringing more people in?
I, I don't think we know the answer. We know that we can prefer Kingston residents.
You can as the trustee's-
One second, Ms. Sherman, let her answer and I'll go back to you.
We know, we know that there are mechanisms that have been established in other towns that create lotteries and have preferences. We don't, we haven't adopted anything yet, so I can't tell you exactly how that's going to go. But the idea here is to help the people that are already here as well as not be bigoted.
The preference, local preference, you're allowed to ask someone-
One second, town council will answer. Ms. Sherman, one second, town council's going to answer the preference issue that you had raised.
If I could just answer two of the questions. One is, what's the purpose? And the purpose is set forth in the Affordable Housing Trust to provide for the preservation and creation of affordable housing in the town of Kingston for the benefit of low and moderate income households. Two, you're allowed to have some sort of preference that's guided by DHCD guidelines for local residents and they set up a very specific criteria for that.
And what's DH-
Department of Housing Community Development in the Commonwealth.
But we don't have that now, is that what I'm saying, hearing?
It's going to, she's saying that we can set those preferences and that's going to be the extent.
But we don't have that now. One more point to-
Correct. One second, Ms. Sherman, if we can answer again. Because we're building the blocks, the trust, the bylaw, the rules and regulations are next, so there, it's all coming up in a, in a checkup load that way. So that's what town council's trying to tell, tell you.
And again, I'm saying that I think we're putting the cart before the horse. Once again, we're going to be backloading into what our guidelines are and I think that that was Mrs. Harlow's point in the beginning. And that's, I, I think we should slow down on this right now.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. I have Ms. Mumford.
I'm just going to sum up to help me ask my next question. 2005 is when we started the CPC? 2005. So, we have to put these, these funds, CPC funds, into three different buckets. This money has been sitting-
Four buckets.
Okay. So, that's where this $600,000 came from. It's been accumulating and accruing and now they're asking to put $600,000 in that fund. What I foresee, tonight, we just approved $25,000 going back into that same bucket. So I would imagine that every year, we're going to come back for the affordable housing to transfer that specific dog-eared money into this fund. So it will continually grow as long as we have the CPC and tonight's estimate, well, tonight's fund was $25,000. So there will be a, a small amount coming forward, am I right?
You're right.
So it will become a yearly vote.
Thank you, Ms. Mumford. I have Mr. Wilson and then I have, is that Mr. Randall?
Yes. Just very quickly to address someone's question about how far the money will go and, you know, why do we need this Affordable Housing Trust? It's as if the town of Kingston is creating an affordable housing real estate company. Think about it that way. We have now gotten a group of people together who are the dedicated people to try to develop affordable housing on behalf of the town or to work in joint partnership with developers of affordable housing. And how far the money goes, I've been a commercial real estate lawyer for 20 years. One of the nice things about real estate is you don't have to pay for the entire thing upfront. There's a concept of using leverage. So you take $300,000 and then you go to a state agency that provides loans and funding for affordable housing and maybe it's a 70% loan to value or 80%, something like that, but, you know, you only need to use a fraction of your equity to leverage that to get additional funds. So we could build an apartment building that might have, you know, any number of units that we could leverage and use, only come up with 20% of the needed funds and borrow the rest and the income stream from the rents would pay off that loan, et cetera. So, you know, we're using this money exponentially and it's money that's already set aside for this purpose and I would hope you would support it.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I was going to say, gentlemen, can you move away from that door just because of that fire code issue? So sir, out back by the fort door?
Bill?
Yes, you? Move away from the door. Over further, please. I have to have you away from the doors, thank you. Just in case you weren't here at the opening. Mr. Randall?
Yep, Bradford Randall, 39 Winter Street. Just, I think this is Chapter 40B, the law regarding affordable housing. We're not anywhere near the 10%, so we can kick the can down the road as long as we want. It's important to remember that if you don't reach the 10%, there's actually a provision and maybe town council can help with this. There's a provision in that law which says the state can come in and designate where they think affordable housing should be and you have almost no control over it. So the gentleman who was speaking with the business, who's concerned about taxes, I mean, he probably wouldn't like it that much if, you know, his area of town got ripped up and a big apartment complex was put behind. Maybe he would, it'd be more business, but we keep control over the affordable housing as long as we stay on top of it. And if the state sees we're not on top of it, we're going to have a big problem.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. I'm going to have town council address though the issue on 40B and the connection with this and your 40B and your 40A.
Right, so this is not 40B particularly, but it is the whole point about the allowing communities to have affordable housing trusts so they can take control of the creation, development of housing to meet their subsized housing inventories, to be able to control the 40B process.
Thank you, town council. Sir?
Russ Boyd, 14 Warf Lane. I think Mr. Dubois indicated that this, part of this money, the $600,000 would be used to leverage more money and I think Mr. Wilson just indicated that. What happens if we don't get the leverage? If they turn us down for whatever reason? We can't leverage the money so the project can't move forward, so we spend X number of dollars out of that fund that's just gone and then where, where do we stand?
Ms. Dubois, will you answer that? Because I think he's, they're mixing apples and oranges.
Um, let me, let me just say that, you know, we're in it for the long haul here as a town. We're in it, the, those of us who are working on this want to establish something that's going to be here for a while and that will work for a long time for the town. So, you know, depend, you know, grants come and go, you're, you're right. So HUD, we don't, we don't know what's going to happen with HUD. HUD does give a lot of money to the state and the state then provides grants. HUD does give a lot of money to the state, and the state then provides grants and whatnot. We don't know what's gonna happen to that. But we also know that, as Mr. Wilson said, we can leverage, we can borrow. But because we're not going to retain ownership, we can make that money back and put it back in the pool and do another project. So it's, think of it as a revolving fund, if you will. That's what we're doing. We're creating equity, we're building assets, we're distributing those assets according to a socially equitable principle, and then we're returning on that investment so that we can reapply that. We're not gonna, in my mind, anyway, it's not our intention to spend the $600,000 and do one project. We intend to change the relationship of this community to the expense of the homes that are here, and we hope that many more people will be able to stay here instead of just leaving for New Hampshire and Maine, which is what they're doing right now.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to make a comment. As we look at our budget and as we spend money, and I don't know about anybody else, my taxes went up tremendously this year. I hope I don't have to move into the affordable housing from the home that I love now.
Thank you, Mr. Villadue. And just so that you know, the money in the trust can only be used, come on, folks, we're trying to get business done. The money in the trust can only be used to advance affordable housing. That's the only thing can be used. Mr. Dandero?
Yes, again, I just urge you, please, to slow down on this. I sit on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I don't know how much longer I'll be, but we hold developers to have a certain amount of their houses that they build for low-income, or affordable housing. So we already have developers doing this now. We're causing another department. We're gonna have to pay for this. This $600,000, we have a town planner. I'm so tired of hearing the state says we have to do, we have a town planner. We should be on top of our game here. We should be figuring out a way to beat this. We don't have a fax machine telling us what the state is telling us what to do. And another thing, I have worked pretty hard for this town. I've never taken anything, I've never been reprimanded by the state for misallocating CPA funds. I urge you, please, to slow down.
Thank you, Mr. Dandero. Sir?
Aaron Eaton, 14 Kennedy Road.
I'm sorry.
Earlier tonight, we approved $40,000 for housing for dead people, which was the right choice, for their tombs. Now they're asking you to just take money that already exists, you're not gonna be tax-mortar, it's there, and move it over to help people that are alive! And they've been waiting since 2005, where the money's been sitting, helping no one. Those people are waiting. They don't need help later, they need help now. Now is a time to move this bill.
Thank you, Ms. Eaton. Sir? Come on. Sir?
My name is Denby Forbes. I live at 3 Schoolhouse Lane in Kingston. And until recently, I was a member of the Affordable Housing Trust in Kingston, until a health issue prevented me from, to continue. But I want you to know that this is money that is already in a fund. And it was passed, Affordable Housing Trust was passed, and the key word here is "trust." I beseech all of you to trust the members of the Affordable Housing Trust, to use this money as seed money, to build affordable housing in Kingston, so that more people can enjoy what Kingston has to offer. This is in partnership with agencies, other nonprofits, like Habitat for Humanity, of which I am currently the vice chair of the local chapter, Habitat for Humanity Greater Plymouth, which is located in Carver. And I'm pulling a plug for the Restore. That's how we generate money to help build houses for people that need affordable housing. Please consider this as a move forward, a progressive move for the town of Kingston, not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Sir?
Hi, Eric Crone, 43 Longwood Circle. I'm on the Elementary School Committee, as well as the Silver Lake Regional School Committee, so I oversee a big chunk of the budget from Kingston, or have a voice on that. One of my biggest concerns with this affordable housing is how many children it'll bring into the community. Just one child per unit could be $10,000 to $14,000, and we would not be bringing in taxes like that on one unit. So my concern is, are you, and I heard something earlier about suites or studios and one-bedroom apartments. That obviously would reduce the amount of kids, but you could still have, you know, a starter unit with, you know, one or two kids coming into a smaller unit. But that's my concern. If we're growing really fast, that's gonna bring, that could bring in an influx of kids into the schools without bringing in the tax money to help support that. So that could run our costs up, and that would affect our taxes directly. So have you taken that into account in terms of what types of units and what type of development you would be looking for?
Thank you, Ms. Dubois.
Yes, we're actually relying on the plan, from the master plan, which basically said to us, we got a problem, and the problem is with people who are older, who can't stay in their homes, the 3,000 or so of us, and people who are trying to get out of the basement of their folks' house and be able to start a career. So we're planning on small stuff, you know, and we're planning to, for it to be equitable. We know that Kingston doesn't want to build another school, or a police department, for that matter. So our effort will be to have the community involved in the plans that we do, and have a reasonable approach to what we're trying to accomplish, so that we deal with what the planning board wants us to do, and that is the older people and the younger people starting out. And yes, younger people starting out sometimes make babies, but they don't stay in small apartments for very long.
Thank you, Ms. Dubois. Sir?
Brandon Warnicki, 37 West Street. I'd just like to bring up the point that my wife and I moved here with our two toddlers two years ago, just because Kingston was such an affordable town, and myself, being a teacher, I really, I was excited about it. I'm like, oh, I can finally afford to live in Kingston, this is awesome. So I have a fixed income, so as much as you know, many, many people know that teachers don't get huge raises every year. So I've been spending $10,000 a year for the last two years just trying to get more education and to work towards my doctorate, just so I can continue to pay the tax increases in this town. So that's, so that's just a voice from one teacher. Now, I understand that it is being appropriated for, that it's currently already existing. You're not gonna be raising the taxes to deliver these funds for affordable housing, but the way this is continuing, the way people keep voting on these different issues and paying millions of dollars for different things, is I will not be able to afford to live in this town continuously in five years, the way the taxes are going. So I can appreciate that this is gonna be used for the correct thing, however, I think it's in the best interest of the people that are in this town already, such as seniors who are selling their homes, to continue to live in the town of Kingston, instead of opening it up to people who already don't live in Kingston, who want to live here, who haven't paid taxes for their entire lives.
Thank you. I have Mr. Fons, and then that woman, and I'm counting, Mr. Fons?
Number three.
It's your number three, so quickly, new information, only.
As someone with toddlers, I'm afraid of hearing teachers having to run out of town, just, that's my opinion. But to what, to Mr. Crone's point, I think he brings a valid concern to the table, and I just, what I have concern with is, I asked how many houses would foreseeably be built, and apparently, we don't know. However, Mr. Crone's concern is, you know, he asked how many students potentially could be coming into town, and we're led to believe that you've looked at that, and you know, and you've looked at the style of the houses, and there's nothing to worry about with how many kids might come into town. To me, it's kind of like holding two contradictory thoughts in our minds at the same time. We know what kind of houses we're gonna build, we know that it won't be a burden on the school system, yet we have no idea how many houses we might be building. That seems disingenuous to me. Thank you.
Thanks. Ma'am? And then I'd like to move the question out.
Oh, that's what I was going to do. Ellen Cook, 70 Elm Street, I just wanted to call the question.
Okay. Mrs. Bob, if I'm gonna do that in general now, do you need me to move that motion? Am I hearing any? I'm not gonna move that motion, I wanna be really clear again. All right, I got a second on the motion to move the question. That was seconded. All those that want to end debate and move the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now moving Article 37, CPC article for the funding of the Kingston Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund. All those in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Moving on to, who do I have? I, oh, is that, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, Lindsay. Do I have a second on the motion to reconsider?
Second.
Having a second on the motion to reconsider, ladies and gentlemen, all those that would like to reopen debate and go, and debate further, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. Moving on to Article 20, 38, Community Preservation Fund Appropriations, Opochinski Basketball Court Fencing. Okay.
Move that the sum of $11,328 be appropriated from available Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds for the purchase and installation of fencing for the Opochinski basketball courts as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, with said project to be under the supervision of the Town of Kingston Board of Selectment and Recreation Department, and with all expenses subject to final review and approval by the Community Preservation Committee prior to the submittal for payment.
Having a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, the Board of Selectment recommends favorable action 500. Finance Committee recommends favorable action 500. You may address your motion.
The Recreation Commission, on behalf of the town of Kingston, is requesting funds to complete the fencing at the Opochinski basketball court. Due to the bids that came in for the project, unfortunately, the funding that was originally requested for the construction of the two basketball courts at the Opochinski complex back in fiscal year 15 was not enough to complete the project, and therefore, two sides of the fence are yet to be installed.
Any further debate? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Moving on to Article 39, Community Preservation Fund Appropriation, Gray's Beach Playground Fence Replacement.
Move that the sum of $25,000 be appropriated from available Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds for the purchase and installation of replacement playground fencing equivalent to best practice as described in the American Society for Testing and Materials Public Use Playground Fencing Standard at the Gray's Beach Playground as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Said project to be under the supervision of the Town of Kingston Board of Selectment and Recreation Department, with all expenses subject to final review and approval by the Community Preservation Committee prior to submittal for payment.
Hearing a second, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectment has favorable action 500. Finance Committee has unfavorable action 050. You may address your motion.
Thank you. The Recreation Commission is requesting funds to install a new fence system at the Gray's Beach Park Playground in order to be in compliance with 2011 changes required for the American Society for Testing and Materials State Guidelines, which is part of the statewide comprehensive injury prevention program through the Department of Public Health. The American Society for Testing and Materials is the world's largest source of standards for safety guidelines, among other standards for materials, goods, and services. The United States Consumer Product Safety Commission is an independent agency of the United States government. The United, the agency was created in 1972 through the consumer, sorry, excuse me, through the Consumer Product Safety Act via the United States Consumer Product Safety Commission. There's a lot of big words there. Which works in conjunction with the guidelines provided by the American Society for Testing and those in the Playground Safety Handbook. The original fence at Gray's Beach Park was installed in 2004, when the playground was constructed, and in 2011, state guidelines have changed. In order to be in compliance with these revised state guidelines, the current fence system needs to be replaced. This information was received based upon a playground audit that was conducted by Playground Inspections of New England. The changes needed for our current fencing system per the current American Safety for Testing and Materials Safety Standards and Guidelines are: smaller mesh, which is needed intending to provide both inadvertent and deliberate attempts to pass through, and eliminates children from climbing on the fence system; entanglement prevention, a condition in which the user's clothes or something around the user's necks becomes caught or entwined on a component and can lead to strangulation; no protrusion of fence parts, such as protruding bolts; a projection, which, when tested, has been found to be a hazard, having the potential for impalement, to cause bodily injury to a user who impacts it; requirement of self-closing and locking gates, which eliminates the opportunity for a child to open the gate and run into the parking lot and getting hit by a car. As the Recreation Director for the town of Kingston, I am presenting this request on behalf of our community. It is my job, as the Recreation Director, to continue to update and educate myself on certain federal and state and safety guidelines and standardizations. One of these responsibilities is that of risk management. It is my job to provide information and communicate to my community about safety guideline changes and safety standardizations on properties in the town that are overseen by the Recreation Department. Therefore, that's why this request is before the town tonight. A great deal has been discussed in the last few meetings about fiscal and financial responsibility, and we have been asked to think about smart financial risk management, managing the money that we have available to our community. That is extremely important, obviously, to all of us. That is how we survive and provide for our community. However, that is not the only responsibility we have as a community. We not only have fiscal, financial responsibilities to our community, but we also need to talk about and be cognizant of safety risk management responsibilities to our community. Sorry, my pages are sticking. I have been made aware of the change-
One second, if you may. If you're gonna have conversations, please leave the room, we can hear them down here, and you can step outside to have your conversations and come back in, because you're clearly not listening anyhow. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. I have been made aware of the changes mentioned above regarding our playground fences. Negligence creates potential liability. Negligence is the unintentional doing or not doing of something which can cause injury to another. When I had reached out to our Town Council for additional direction for not only our responsibility regarding these standardization changes, but also our fiscal responsibility, Attorney Tallerman responded, "If there are available funds, I believe we would all agree that reducing risk of injury and thereby reducing risk of being sued could be a good thing." The funds are available through the Community Preservation Act, funds that are specifically designated and to be used for open space and recreation. This request is about reducing and managing safety risks for our community. As I mentioned, we have discussed in length about our fiscal, financial responsibility, and I am now asking all of us to think about our responsibility to safety risk management. What that means is that as a community, we need to acknowledge when certain federal and state safety standards and guideline changes, and as a community, we need to address those changes. Once we receive new information about any safety standardization and safety guideline changes, it is our responsibility as a community to do our due diligence and to recognize them. It is our responsibility to move in the direction of these new guidelines. It is our responsibility to manage that risk for our community, for our families, and for our children. New safety guidelines for anything are usually created or changed as an outcome of something that has already happened, and most likely because it has happened more than once. New safety guideline changes are designed and intended to protect us. Whether we agree with these changes or not, that is not what this request is about. This request is about accepting that these changes have been made for a reason, and most likely because someone's child has been injured. These safety changes have been adopted to protect, in this case, our children. With all of that being said, why, as a community, would we not do the same thing for our residents and for our children? Why would we not be a community that responds to and addresses new federal and safety standards? Why would we not support our responsibility as a community to protect our children?
Thank you. I have, sir?
Russ Boyd, 114 Warf Lane. Just so I'm clear, is this something that's mandated by the state, or just a recommendation by the state?
Thank you, can you answer that?
I can.
Is it mandated?
It is not a mandate. These are safety standards and guidelines that are recommended through this, the United States Consumer Protection Agency that I mentioned previously. But they are something that, as I mentioned, also that our attorney, Tallerman, suggested that is our due diligence, once we're aware of this information, that we actually act on these things.
Thank you. Sir?
When it was, when it was first installed, there were different guidelines you mentioned?
Correct.
And they raised the standard, they changed the standard?
Correct.
Okay. So the $25,000 that you're asking for, you say, are already appropriated- So the $25,000 that you're asking for, you say, are already appropriated, we're not...it's not additional funding?
Correct. It's part of the Community Preservation Act Fund, and it's under that bucket of the open space and recreation.
And where do those funds originally come from?
One second, if I...are you asking where does the CPC funds come from?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So in other words, is that tax...tax money?
All right, I'm going to have Finance Committee...actually, they come off your tax bill. It's taxed on your tax bill.
Tax money. So in other words-
It's 1% of the overall...it's 1%, right? Actually, Mary, can you answer that then, Mary?
Absolutely. The CPA is a surcharge on your tax bill. So you...as we talked about the other night, the average single-family home in the Town of Kingston is a $6,000 tax bill. In addition to the $6,000, there is a 1% surcharge that is added to that bill and sent to you. That 1% is allocated as CPC funding. So it's in addition to the taxes. I think it was mentioned earlier that we sacrifice 1% of our taxes. That's not true. This is in addition to.
Right. So in other words-
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. Go ahead, Mr. Boyd.
So in other words, it is...it is tax money. Basically, it comes from...from our taxes.
No, that's what she's indicating. It's a surcharge. It's not part of your real estate taxes. It's just billed on the same bill.
Well, you're still paying it. We're still paying the money.
Yeah, you're paying for it.
Right, obviously. So my point is, is that here we're paying $25,000 for a fence that we...I understand it's recommended, but it's not really necessary. It's not a necessary fence, because the fencing has been there. Have grandchildren that play in there on a regular basis, never had a problem. That doesn't mean something couldn't happen, but that doesn't mean something won't happen with a new updated fence. And I think that, again, as other people have recommended, we've got to slow down on the spending of our money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Jean Coleman, 20 Howlands Lane. Ms. Woodworth, I appreciate all you're doing for this, but I've had to bite my tongue while standing here. Unfortunately, I have brought to the Recreation Commission's attention, no less than three times in the last year and a half since the last gate was installed, that the locking mechanism does not work. It's been on countless Facebook forums. There's been countless debates about it, about how...they said it was fixed, but then it wasn't fixed. I have young toddlers. There are some really excited elderly that are going to play tennis, that are constantly flying through the parking lot. The gate does not latch. The locking mechanism does not work. From my understanding, that gate was just installed, no less than three years ago at the most, when the same gate...there was a twofold, like a larger gate made for equipment to come into the playground, and the gate was...somebody told me that the first avenue that they were looking to correct that locking mechanism problem was to see if it was still under warranty, because it was obviously a safety concern. It's been now a year and a half, and every time I go to the playground, I have to stand on that side of the park, because the gate doesn't work. So I'm wondering if we've even explored or asked the company that we just recently installed these gates from, which should be in compliance to any present-day safety standards, if we've asked them to fix the lock for free, since it's never worked. And, I mean, my kids have lost countless pairs of shorts climbing the fence that you're talking about, so I do appreciate that we're looking to, you know, put, you know, something that they're not going to be climbing or ripping clothes on. But when it comes to the locking mechanism, I already see that the town, I mean, they basically ignored the issue of the gate not locking. So I'm just wondering, now we're about to spend $25,000 and replace the whole thing, when I wonder if this would have even been an issue if the gate would have just been fixed in the first place?
Thank you, ma'am. In the gate, I'm assuming you're talking about is the fence that already is existing around the playground?
The one that was replaced.
Just want to confirm that that's what I thought you were referring to.
Um, yes and no. There was a gate that was taken off, and the double door was put in.
No, I'm aware of that. I'm talking, this is the same fencing, though, the same area?
No. There was...there was-
So where...what...what gate are you talking about?
It's a new one that was installed a couple of years ago on the side of the playground, and the gate that was there was removed, and there was a double gate put in.
Okay. But it's on the...it's about the fencing. It's on the playground?
Yes and no.
Okay. All right, I get it. Ms. Woodworth, have you guys looked at that, or has anybody submitted that to the Board of Selectmen? Has the Board of Selectmen looked at that? Maybe Mr. Wilson, you can answer that, or Town Administrator? So it's never been brought to...I'm sorry. So it's never been brought to your attention? Town Administrator and Board of Selectmen Chair?
No.
Okay. Well, it's now being brought to your attention. Okay, so can somebody jot that down and look at it? So now, Ms. Woodworth, is that going to be a portion of the fencing that is part of the $25,000 to be replaced?
Yes.
Okay. So it's to be replaced, and have you...it's only...Gray's Beach has only just come under Rec Commission's authority, right? Or is that one of our articles coming up? So it's not even under Rec Commission authority at this point, right?
The Recreation Department does oversee the Gray's Beach Park, in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So has...has anybody in your department addressed the issue of the faulty gate?
We are aware of the fa-
And warranties or anything else?
There are no warranties, and the gate was not replaced three years ago. The gate that she had mentioned, the double gate, was actually replaced. That's a separate gate, and that is not an access area for children. The gate that is in question was not replaced three years ago. That is not correct. There are no...there are no gates that were placed on that fence.
Okay, thank you.
There was a locking mechanism that was changed.
Ma'am? Okay, one second. Go ahead.
No, I don't have a thing.
Okay. I'm sorry. Yes, go...Ms. Coleman?
For clarification, the gate that I'm talking about that's never worked was just put in when the previous gate was removed. There used to be only two access points to the playground. One of them became a larger non-access point for children, but access point for equipment, and there was a side gate added, and that's the one that was just added, no more than two or three years ago, and it's never worked. So what I'm saying is that particular gate that was added should have been in compliance with these regulations that we're about to wipe that out and spend $25,000 on a brand-new gate. Is what I'm...
Okay. Can I respond? Is my confusion?
The gate was not a new gate. The gate was actually moved from the original location where the double gate was, so it was the same gate, and it was just put in a different location, that entrance gate that you're talking about. So it's not a new gate regarding the compliance.
But with a brand-new locking mechanism that's never worked. And that was why my original question was, why wasn't that under warranty, or why didn't they come out and put a simple locking mechanism that at least holds the gate still? Because, I mean, we can talk all day about liabilities, they just listen to you, but the point is, we're lucky to this point that we don't already have liability on our hands, because the gate is so dangerous. So I do appreciate that you guys are looking to comply from here on out, but for the last year and a half, those requests have been ignored. So I just...I mean, it's $25,000. It may have been already set aside, but it's embarrassing almost that this is the forum that needed to be brought up. But it's, again, no less than three times the Recreation Commission that that gate has been broken, and now it's being addressed as if we're doing everything in our power to have a safe playground. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Corlentile, 31 Howlands Lane. I believe, my opinion, it's a total waste of money. That being said, the number-one concern I hear with people with regard to Gray's Beach Park, with regard to safety, is the drug use that's occurring over there, and the not-locking of the gate in the evening time. And I discussed this last week as well, and when it was brought up at a town meeting, they said there were not funds to lock the gate. So it bothers me that if we're going to be spending $25,000, we're spending on something that is a hypothetical, as opposed to something that is actually taking place. So, again, I think misuse of resources, $25,000, period. But that being said, I think, again, we should focus on what is actually happening as opposed to all these hypotheticals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hallow, just to remind you, I think the chief, if I'm not misquoting him, said that there was an issue with locking the gate, because the police like to drive through to make sure the people that might be misusing, they can actually get to without getting out of the cruiser and going up, you know what I mean? So I think there's two issues there that he said he was looking at the pros and cons on, in regard to the gate, so...yes, Mr. Hallow on this side?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howlands Lane. Two comments. One is with regard to the $25,000. Again, I understand CPC funds. I think a common misconception, though, is that it's quote-unquote "free money." It's already there. My suggestion is if we're going to have CPC funds, we don't just spend it for the sake of spending it, in this case, on something that isn't mandated or required or even necessary. The fence is intact, that's there. As has been stated, there's always a concern for safety, but you could build a solid wall with a bubble on the inside of it so kids bounce off it and cover it with grease so they can't climb it, and there's still going to be an issue somewhere along the line. You cannot bubble-safety-net everything. And so I think by, again, constantly changing and spending money that doesn't need to be spent, is just...it's frivolous. It's unfortunate we live in a litigious society, but it is. It's frivolous, and I don't...just can't see supporting $25,000 on a perfectly good fence replacement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fauntz...I mean, Mr. Hallow, Mr. Fauntz.
Joe Michael Fauntz, 16 May Avenue.
I have you queued up, Mr. Wilson.
Just a...one thing. I just want to preface this by saying, you know, I'm a father of two young boys. I go to the Gray's Beach Park quite frequently, almost on a weekly basis. I'm on that playground all the time with my son, and I see no issue with the fence. To me, this article, much like many other articles, has two main questions. Number one, do we need what we're...what we're looking for here? Do we need it? Do we need a new fence? That's one question. The second question comes after you answer the first one, and if you answer yes, we need it, then the second question is, well, how much should it cost? So to speak to the first part, do we need it? I don't think we do. I think, quite frankly, it's laughable to think that you walk onto a playground and you look around and you ask yourself, what's the most dangerous part here? If anyone would answer the fence, aside from the part with the gate being open, which I agree with, an open gate is definitely an issue if a kid runs out into a parking lot. But to think that you're going to look around at jungle gyms and slides and all these things that are, you know, eight, nine feet up in the air that a kid could fall off of, you're going to point to the fence as the most dangerous part? That's laughable to me. You know, where is the individual responsibility of parents? Your kid's going to get hung on a fence and choke? Are you watching your kid? I watch mine. I watch mine, and I know what the most dangerous parts of that playground are, and I can tell you they're not the fence. So I would argue that it's not necessary. When I go down there, my concern is, yes, my kid falling or stepping on a hypodermic needle. That is my concern, not a chain-link fence. So that's my position on the need. As for the cost, which I will discuss, although I feel that it's not necessary, I'll still touch...touch on the cost. $25,000 for that amount of fence? That's a four-foot fence, chain-link, which, as far as I know, is probably one of the most inexpensive kinds of fences. In fact, if I'm...if I understand correctly, the issue is the size of the holes in the chain-link. It sounds to me you wouldn't even have to replace the post. You could just unroll the chain-link and bring a new roll of smaller hole-chain-link and wrap it on there. You know, I put a significantly larger amount of fence around my yard, six feet tall, vinyl. It cost me $7,000. This is three times the amount for a shorter fence that's not as large of a perimeter? That's...that's...that sounds absurd to me. This is insanity, quite frankly. You know, if we're that concerned with safety, let's just tear down the whole playground, right? Because we don't want anyone to fall and get hurt.
Thank you, Mr. Fauntz. I have Mr...is that you, Mr. Winnick?
Boydlow, 14 Warf Lane. Going back to the maintenance issue in the playground, some weeks ago, we had a meeting. Playground Commission was there on the new proposal, which will be coming up in one of the articles, about repairing the revetment wall, and we were...we were told that the...it would lower the cost of maintenance. It would make maintenance less. This lady right here just pointed out the fact that we've had an impropriety with the fencing for a long period of time. I asked the question, I believe, to you about the trash compactor that was down there. You said it was donated. The thing hasn't worked for I don't know how many months, all winter, and so here we are. We're going to put up a new fence. We can't take care of the old fence. What happens when the new fence isn't taken care of? We're going to be back in the same thing. I think we should focus more on what we have and making it better than trying to spend money on a fence that's...that's not required.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Hallow?
Yeah. Dorothy Pat Hallow, 3 Pebbleankings, Kingston, Massachusetts. Needless to say, I agree with the four speakers before me, but I want to, first of all, say thank you for not putting in this verbiage that it was a mandated fence. Secondly, I did my due diligence. I went over to the park and checked out the fence, and I thought it was perfect. It looked gorgeous. If there's a gate issue, it should be addressed. No question about that. But as far as the fence is concerned, it looks brand-new. So I really feel that it's absolutely unnecessary to spend $25,000 on a fence that looks new. The last question I'd like to put forward is on the Finance Committee. The vote was 050. Could someone please explain?
I think I'm queued up, so...
Yes.
I'll be up in a minute.
Finance Committee is queued up, so she's going to get up in a minute, so she'll answer that.
Okay, very well. Other than that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hallow.
Oh, I do want to mention, I got on that site, due diligence again, not too anal, just the way it is. I got on the site, the American Society for Testing and Materials Public. I didn't see a fence. I saw slides, but I did not see a fence. So I don't know if you people looked at that site, and you can direct me to it so that I have a better understanding of what the site is about, but I didn't see one fence on that particular site, and I searched. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bonsek? Then I have Mr. Wilson, Ms. McKinnon, and then Mr. Randall.
Peter Bonsek, 33 Farm Estates. Mr. Hallow and Mr. Fauntz kind of stole a little bit of my thunder. They already talked about some of the stuff I want to talk about, but, you know, I got seven grand...I brought up three kids. I got seven grandchildren, ages two months to 10 years old. And, you know, I encourage my...some of my grandchildren to climb on the fence. I have no problem with that, but you know why? Because I'm there watching them. Any responsible adult parent, grandparent, is going to be in there watching the kids. And I agree with Mr. Fauntz that the kids are going to get more hurt falling off the jungle gym, the slide. You know, like he said, let's just take it all down. We need to let kids be kids, under adult supervision, of course, but to spend $25,000...I don't know if anybody's been down there lately. That's a...that's a...it looks awesome. It's a beautiful-looking fence. If there's a problem with the self-closing gate, replace the gate. Get a self-closing gate. But there's nothing wrong with children being children and having their parents watch them. To have to change a $25,000 and not spend the money just because it's in that bucket, because I guarantee you that fence will last another 10 or 15 years the way it is. And what if we go and change it, and two years from now, the recommendation says, well, we need to change this because it's going to help some child not get a Band-Aid cut? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsek. I have Mr. Wilson.
I just wanted to give a little context, the Selectmen's vote. I absolutely respect people's opinion on articles that are expenditures, that are on the discretionary side. Reason that we have the, you know, Finance Committee versus just a Selectmen recommendation is to get a financial...someone who is looking strictly from or primarily from the financial perspective, and so you're going to hear their perspective and why they voted the way they did.[1607.71] You know, we are more of the public policy arm of your local government. So we have CPA funds. We do take this 1% per year, and we've designated it solely for these specific types of items. So when we hear of things that are related to potential safety, liability, we also, as your selectmen, manage lawsuits in town and are a little bit more attuned to the fact that people do, in fact, sue this town. And as we've seen by the increases in our legal budgets this year, unfortunately, you know, business is good for the lawyers. I'm a transactional guy, so I'm not a litigator. But it is unfortunate. So when we looked at twenty-five thousand dollars of a recreational use expense that we're told is directly addressing a potential safety violation, that if some kid did get hurt one time, it could cost us more than the twenty-five thousand that we have allocated for this specific thing, we felt that, you know, short money for potential liability. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. McKinnon?
Thank you. Sue, I appreciate the hard work and the due diligence and your concerns for dealing with the safety of our children. As a parent of two children in this community, one who gets hurt, and you know full well, I have a child who has been hurt not once but twice severely on town-owned property, one time so severely that he was transported by ambulance to the hospital where he was admitted. And I suppose that I could have come down to Town Hall the next day, or I could have marched down to the Recreation Department, or whatever department it was, and demanded a lot of changes to our town-owned property. But the fact of the matter is, and no, I was not there when he was hurt, and you may call him a klutz, but he's not. He's an active 11-year-old boy who plays hard. He's very athletic, and things happen. So as a parent of that type of a child, I understand that there are risks involved. But, you know, that being said, we can't replace every piece of asphalt with rubber mats. We have to, you know, make decisions that make sense for the community. The Finance Committee's interpretation or recommendation for this particular article was unfavorable because, a couple of reasons. Number one, the consideration of the fence. We all felt that the fence itself was in pretty good shape. If it needs a new locking mechanism, that's certainly a much cheaper fix to a fence than to replace the entire fence that seems to be in pretty good shape. When we started talking about fences, we were far more concerned about the fence at the Kingston Elementary School, where there are sections of the fencing that has been peeled back. It's at eye level. It poses much more of a danger and a risk to students, the, you know, hundreds and hundreds of students who play in that playground every day, as opposed to the not-hundreds and hundreds of children who are on the Grace Beach playground every day. The other thing is that we started to look at the ASTM standards, and we heard that a lot of these safety issues are based upon or predicated upon this ASTM standard, the American Society of Testing Materials. And the organization describes itself as a standards organization that develops and publishes voluntary consensus standards. The ASTM is an open forum, and by that, it means that any person, including every single person in this room, can sign up, and for the low, low fee of seventy-five dollars, you can become a member and you can develop standards. So it's not a -- it's not an organization that is staffed with medical professionals who are testing these kinds of things, or engineers. It's a group of volunteers who are developing recommended consensus standards. So one of the concerns is, we as a community need to determine what kind of standards we want to adopt for all of our play spaces, for our schools, for everything. Because if we are going to adopt voluntary standards and apply those standards to playgrounds like Grace Beach and look at the fencing for that kind of a facility, then we're also setting a precedent that may have unintended consequences. Because we have fences at the Bailey Playground, we have fences at the Grace Beach Tennis Courts, miles and miles of fence at the Kingston Elementary School, the Kingston Intermediate School, Silver Lake Middle School, Silver Lake High School, Gavoni Field, Opochinski Complex. There's lots and lots of fences, and if we're going to adopt standards for one set of fence, we need to anticipate and understand the consequences for future town meetings and future fence discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. Mr. Randall?
I just move that we call the question.
So we have motion to move the question, that being seconded. All those in favor of ending debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. So we're now going to move Article 39, CPC Articles, Community Preservation Fund Appropriation, Grace Beach Playground Fence. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. Moving on to...
Reconsider.
I have Mr. Hallow in the back, moving to reconsider. Do I have a second?
Second.
Here in a second on that. All those, ladies and gentlemen, if you vote yes on this one, you're voting to reopen debate and to reargue it. All those in favor of reopening debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. Moving on to Article 40. And I will let everybody know, this is the transfer of town-owned property to the Kingston Affordable Housing Trust, and that we have -- this one, ladies and gentlemen, is going to be -- it was misprinted as a two-third vote. This is actually only a majority vote required. So it's only a majority vote. Mr. Bois?
Move that the town authorize the selectmen to sell, transfer, or convey certain property to the Kingston Affordable Housing Trust as printed in the warrant.
Having a second on that. Board of Selectmen has voted favorable, 4-0-1. Finance Committee has voted favorable, 6-1-0. Mr. Bois?
So now that we have some funds, we did uncover, so to speak, in our quest for suitable projects, that the town owns a parcel of land, and if you guys have this handout, next to the train station parking lot, which is at the very top of Copper Beach Drive and at the very end of Marion Drive. So there's a 1.75-acre parcel that apparently originally the town of Kingston owned. It went to the MBTA when the MBTA was developing the railroad station and parking lot, and then it was returned to the town of Kingston for $1. There's an additional parcel, so that's outlined in red and is numbered A on the cover sheet of this. And there's a tiny little parcel next to it that I didn't know about when I made that little map, that actually abuts the Kingston Intermediate School, and that parcel is .07 acres. So together, they're 1.82 acres of land. They abut each other. That second tiny parcel was a remnant of the Indian Pond Estates development. So what we're asking here is that the selectmen, who are the custodians of this land, which is currently zoned commercial-industrial, be allowed to transfer it from their reservoir of town-owned properties into the care of the Affordable Housing Trustees so that we can plan for the development and follow through with the development of affordable housing. We know this is at the very end of Copper Beach Drive, and we have, in fact, met with a number, a few of the representatives of that neighborhood to talk about their concerns that they have, which include, are you gonna make a throughway through that lot and open up Copper Beach Drive so that our kids can't play on the street anymore? And all I can say to that is, we can plan a project there without planning a throughway. We may not be able to plan a project there in violation of the deed that says the town of Kingston needs to maintain an emergency access, which it has right now. Right now, if you look again at inside that group of papers that you have, there's another -- this one, it's kind of a, you know, bird's-eye-view photo. You'll see that a lot of the lot is taken up by a cul-de-sac. And so, you know, people drive up there, maybe the buses turn around there. Some people dump their garbage there, you know? So it has an amount of debris. There are people, I've been up there a couple of times, just watching it, you know? And there are people that get off the train and look around, see if anybody's looking to see if they can go hang out there for a while. There's that kind of thing that goes on. But otherwise, it's unused. It's next to and abuts, you know, the other parcel of land that is used as sort of a secondary parking area for people that are using the train. We like it because it's next to the train. We also like it because it's pretty close to the school, to Kingston Collection Shopping, to the, you know, to the other, you know, to Lowe's, to the highway. It's a really convenient location. So we think that we can work with the community of Copper Beach. We think that we can work with other people in town, including the town boards, and as well as real designers, and come up with a plan that will construct really great affordable housing. And when I say really great affordable housing, I'm talking about something that is conservation-minded, that has a low cost for maintaining, that has energy-efficient appliances, and conservation of its water resources. And I think that we can build units there, be they apartments or single-family homes, working with other agencies and nonprofits in this area to construct homes that would be really good without violating the peace of the neighborhood. So that's pretty much the article, transferred from the selectmen's care and ownership as an industrial-commercial site to the Affordable Housing Trust so that we can build affordable homes in a convenient location for the town's enjoyment, and to bring that property, which is now, right now, not an asset, as an asset into the town.
Thank you, Mr. Dubois. Mr. Bonsek?
Peter Bonsek, 335 Estates. Why is the town not selling it instead of -- in the article, it says, "Sell, transfer, or whatever." Why isn't it just not being sold? We've already taken $600,000 of the money of the people, which I know has been accumulating. Now you wanna give town-owned land away to give it to affordable housing. So why isn't it just not being said, be it sold?
Mr. Dubois, before you answer that, I'm gonna actually ask, while Tom Innes straight away, Mr. Wilson, do you want to address that from the Board of Selectmen, which is our selling power?
So essentially, this is the emergency access route to the commuter rail station. It's not really big enough for any kind of significant commercial-industrial, nor do we as selectmen feel favorable to building commercial-industrial at the end of a residential cul-de-sac. So we don't think it's appropriate for what it's currently zoned. It's currently off of the tax rolls because it's town-owned. If this transfer was done and the Affordable Housing Trust develops affordable housing through a developer or sells to a developer or to residents, it will get this property on the tax rolls and start generating revenue for the town. So hopefully that somewhat addresses your question.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Bonsek?
Another question, would the residents of Copper Beach Drive have any say if this is passed and to what will go in there, where it could be a 40B? Or will they have any say? Once it's passed, it's going into the trust, they have a say. Will the residents have a say what goes there?
Well, I can tell you...
Mr. Dubois, can you address that? But, no, that's quite all right, but also taking into consideration, the Planning Board might wanna address their authority on that matter. But go ahead, Mr. Dubois.
I can only, I can tell you what I told them and what we will stand by, and that is that we expect to work with the neighborhood. We expect to work with the neighborhood. So if the neighborhood is willing to work with the Affordable Housing Trust to help us develop a good plan there, that's what we're gonna do. As to the 40B, I'm not sure that there's a way to build up there without it being a friendly 40B, and I think that's what the Planning Board will tell you. And that means we don't want to -- and the reason why it would be that way is because of the commercial-industrial zone and the access issues. So if it's a friendly 40B, we get to work with everybody, make the adjustments that we need to make for the community without going through the state. So there's two ways of doing it. If you're a developer, often you'll go through the state, get all of the bylaws and the zoning regulations in the town dismissed, and, you know, let the state approve your development. That's not what we're talking about.
Thanks, Mr. Dubois. I'm gonna ask our town planner from the -- Mr. Bot.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Tom Bot, I'm the town planner here in Kingston, Mass. And a friendly 40B is actually a local initiative program, local action unit. Sounds less scary than a friendly 40B, doesn't it? In this process, whoever was going to develop this property would come to the selectmen and say, this is what we're proposing to do on this piece of property. You work with the Department of Housing and Community Development to do the marketing plan, to do the deed restrictions and things like that to ensure that the properties remain affordable in perpetuity. I wanna make a brief distinction between 40B-type of developments and something that the Affordable Housing Trust has to do. Under the law, when you create an affordable unit, it has to look from the outside like the market-rate units. You can't go through a development and go castle, castle, affordable, castle, castle, affordable. So it's very difficult to make market-rate units that are built by developers under 40B into smaller types of houses. And we look at things in our affordable housing plan that says, we need one-bedroom units, we need two-bedroom units. This sort of thing is what you might envision at this area, as we've talked about, those starter homes, those people, those empty nesters and things like that are looking to create finding these affordable units. So the process doesn't stop here. A plan would be developed. That plan would come through the selectmen for that local initiative process, and the process for marketing these units and putting the deed restrictions on it all be vetted through DHD and Town Council.
Thank you, Mr. Bot. Mr. Bonsek?
One last question. If the residents of Copper Beach Drive, and I want this on the record, that if they decide they don't want it there, it will not go there? I'd like to have an answer, yes or no.
Well, Town Council will answer that. I would assume that would mean no.
I mean, they have a resident...
It's affordable housing. If it's gonna be owned by the Affordable Housing Trust, it's going to be an affordable housing.
So that means the Copper Beach residents have no say in the matter?
That's not what Mr. Dubois said. Mr. Dubois said she'd work with them with the understanding it will be affordable housing, right? Is that -- yeah. So she'll work closely with them. But it will be, if we transfer property into Affordable Housing Trust, it will be affordable housing.
Yeah, my impression, I see, is that Mr. Kennedy? I can't quite see all that way. Yeah, so, oh, and Brian. So I'll let you guys talk.
Well, Copper Beach is behind you, is other words what you're saying.
Okay, that's fine. Just, I would recommend not voting this. If the residents cannot have a choice on what's gonna happen around the area and their neighborhood, it's not costing the town any money. It's a piece of land that's not being used, and if they don't have a say, I say vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsek. Mr. Hallow?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Holland Lane. I didn't know if perhaps yield to the people at Copper Beach Drive...
You're either speaking now or you're done.
Okay, not a problem. I just, they were waiting. With regard to the, it's approximately 1.75 acres, if I'm not mistaken...
The what? I didn't hear you.
It's approximately 1.75 acres, if I'm not mistaken. Sorry, say that again.
Sorry. One parcel is 1.75, one is .07.
Okay. So approximately 1.82 acres of land. Are there restrictions on the spacing of the properties, or is that to be determined at, once plans start coming forward? So for example, is there a saturation point? Like you can't have more than 10 units, or 20, or 30, or five? I'm just curious on that section.
There's no guidance, other than the common sense and the people working together, right?
Okay.
There's no, you know, I mean, Mr. Bot would've said that, but the LIP, you know, we're not gonna put what can't fit there, and we're not gonna put what's not happy there, and we're not gonna make the neighborhood unhappy.
Okay. Thank you. With regard to Selectman Wilson's point about more revenue, yes, if you do build more houses, you do get more tax revenue. As I touched upon at Candidates' Night, it seems like the cost per added resident is higher than the cost, or the revenue generated from the taxes because of all the services that we currently provide. So again, I think that's a very cautionary point to make to everybody with regard to, yes, it is bringing more revenue, but if the revenue is less than the service expenses, then you have yourself a greater debt. So that's just something to keep in mind for everybody. So I would recommend voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallow. I'm, sorry. Sir?
Brian Gagnon, 19, Copper Beach Drive. So first, I'd just like to say, the lot of land that questioned directly abuts my property. And at the Planning Board meeting about a week, a week and a half ago, we were told that this was not a 40B, when I brought that up from multiple people in the room. Tonight, we hear that it's a friendly 40B, so I'm not sure what changed between then and now.
Mr. Bot, do you want to address that in regard to what occurred at the Planning Board meeting and tonight? Sorry, I think you dropped something.
40B is shorthand for a lot of people to talk about any affordable unit. So under 40B, this is statute in the law, so calling it a local action unit, which is what it is, it would be affordable units, and it would go through the selectmen. So you might call it a friendly 40B, as I said, you might call it a LIP, because it's actually what it is, is a local initiative program, and it's a local action unit. That's what the DHD refers to it. So the town decides, this is what they wanna put on the property. 40B is a shorthand used, basically it says that you have to go through this marketing program, you have to have the units affordable, you have to have them deed restricted. So people use 40B sort of shorthand for all those things rather than going through the list that I just did, marketing plan, deed restrictions, and things like that. And of course, they have to be income-qualified for the properties, income-asset-qualified.
Right now, I understand what a 40B is. I guess my point was at the Planning Board meeting, when I brought 40B up, I was told by everyone in the room it wasn't a 40B, rather loudly, and now, tonight, it's a friendly 40B. So I'm just curious what changed.
So I'm not, so...
Mr. Dubois, let him finish.
I'm sorry.
Are you done, sir?
No.
No, I mean about the 40.
Yeah.
You're done with your question?
With that question, but I'd like to say some more.
Yep, welcome back to you. Mr. Dubois, now, I know you're like me. Mr. Dubois, now, I know you're like me, we got right in.
So, so I'm not the town planner, so I use the common lingo. They use the more recent language of the local initiative petition, which is also fundable in certain grant ranges, but, but that local initiative provision is allowed within that 40B. It's not the same at all as a developer employing a 40B development in order to get it through town, because he has no obligation to talk to you at all. And that, you know, essentially, the value of us doing it is that, you know, we're your neighbors, we're not in it for a profit, we, we have a social contract essentially with the town, and we're there for you as well as for the accomplishment of the goal. So it's not what you think of as a 40B, and so they were right, and the more correct term, as Tom says, is LIP, LIP.
One second, Mr. Gagnon, before you go on, our prior retired building inspector, Mr. Armstrong, I think he can help us with some further maybe clarification.
Paul Armstrong, 48 Winter Street. The property is zoned commercial industrial, you can't put housing on it without going through a program that's state mandated that provides relief from local zoning. So the reason they're talking 40Bs is that if you just went in with a permit, to get a permit, you couldn't get it because it's not zoned for that. That's the only vehicle that they can use at this present time.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Do you understand what he's saying?
No, I completely understand it. My question was just, yeah, the discrepancy between the planning board meeting tonight, so.
All right, your next question?
Yeah, so more importantly, I'd just like to give some more context about Copper Beach Drive and our neighborhood. So for those of you who don't know, it's a quiet dead-end street that runs parallel to where we are right now, the two schools. There are 19 single-family homes on the street. We have 20-plus kids under the age of 13, another handful of high school age, and we're extremely lucky to live where we do. Our kids play street hockey, football, baseball, basketball in the street. They ride their bikes, they ride scooters, they ride rollerblades in the street, they play manhunt at night in the street, all without the worry of traffic or danger of traffic. So I guess first and foremost, I'm opposed and concerned with anything that would negatively impact that environment. Secondly, when we've talked to the Affordable Housing Trust, one question that keeps coming up is, what is the scope of this project? There's no answer. They say that they don't have the land yet, they can't tell us what the plan is, they don't have a plan. So how can we be reasonably expected to support something that's gonna go directly next to my house when there's no plan? We don't know how many units are going in there, what type of units? Are they gonna be single-family homes? Probably not. Will they be duplex units? Maybe. Condos, apartments? We have no idea what will go into that lot of land. So with that in mind, I would just ask for your support in defeating this tonight. I would ask that everyone in here vote as if this piece of property was next to their house in their neighborhood where they're raising their family. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Mr. Fons, Mr. Fons, Mr. Kennedy, and then Mr. Dubois. Mr. Fons?
I have a couple of concerns regarding this property. One, I guess I'll just start by saying, I'd like to remind everybody that we're in a town that pretty much lost its mind when we talked about the possibility of having a train, of having a train station here. There was a lot of concern about what types of people would be coming down from Boston and whatnot, and I was a kid back then, but I remember hearing about it, and I know people were really, really passionate about that. So just, I would keep that in mind when we think about the fact that we're trying to, I guess, figure out what type of property would be built there, right? Because as we just heard, we really aren't getting any answers, so we're trying to kind of guess what's gonna go there. So with guessing, I would say that most likely, a single-family home would not go there, because even if it's affordable housing, most people don't want to live across the street from a parking lot to a train station. And again, I don't live in that neighborhood, but I do share your concern, because I can see, you know, I've been up that neighborhood a few times jogging and whatnot, and I could see it's kind of like a buffer between you guys and the train station, that, that area. So, you know, taking that buffer away, I could see why that would be a concern. But furthermore, you know, when we're looking at articles, what I try to do is, I try to not just look at right, what we're looking at right now. I try to have a bigger picture in mind, how it affects the budget in general, on the grand scheme of things, and being that I feel, you know, that most likely it wouldn't be a single-family home, would probably be apartments or whatnot, you know, apartments are well-known for having a much higher turnover rate in terms of people entering and exiting, and, you know, people who own a single-family home tend to stay there. People who rent apartments tend to move around. So to me, the concern that comes into my mind is what? My concern is, we heard on previous nights at town meeting about the volatility of our school budget due to children moving in and out, particularly students who are special, need special education, how that really has a huge impact on the budget. So if we're looking at potentially putting more apartments into Kingston as opposed to single-family homes, now we're opening ourselves up to an increase in the volatility of our school budget because of that. Furthermore, you know, we've heard about restrictions on how many bedrooms can be there, and this and that. It's important to remember that the government will have us believe that what they have set up in terms of rules and protocols will actually work. And we need to remember that people, us human beings, we tend to break the rules. And more often than not, the government has a very hard time of controlling that. Some of that is because of the actual constitutional rights that we have, such as illegal search and seizure. We can't be running into people's homes to see how many people are sleeping in bedrooms. So you might have an apartment with one bedroom in it, but there might be four kids on, in there, living in there, and that affects our budget. So we need to keep that in mind. That's my take. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fons. Mr. Kennedy?
David Kennedy, 13 Copper Beach Drive. I'm gonna start with the big, I'm gonna start with the big picture here. We have a development that might be coming through pretty soon on the O'Donnell property. How many units are coming? We don't know. The MBTA is not filling their lot. They want, they, they want to develop something on their property. So that's, that's two big developments that are going down at the end of our street that that's happening. So I'm not sure why the Board of Selectmen is donating or is going to sell a little piece of property where you already have two other developments there. The other piece that, that concerns me quite a bit is, this piece of property backs into the elementary school, and it's an emergency access for the fire and police, not only if an accident happened here in the town of Kingston, but out on Route, out on Route, anywhere else around here. It's a med-flight access into the elementary school in the back, in the backfield there. If they can't get in through the elementary front part, if this project goes through, they're gonna block it, and there's no secondary access. That's another concern. Another piece is, is that there, the MBTA has an easement at the cul-de-sac where the gate is for them to access in case of an emergency. The big thing there is, is that the street cannot be accessed by this piece of property. And to be honest with you, this piece of property is landlocked, doesn't have a street that goes into it or out of it. So as far as I'm concerned, this is, this is kind of a mute point. I know the Affordable Housing Commission has been formed, the bylaw was passed, they have money. I'm not sure why they're picking this piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Dubois, and then I have this, this lady over here. Sorry, I forgot your name.
Okay. So in the, in the order maybe that I wrote them down, and I apologize for not catching who it was that said, so taking the buffer away. I don't really think we're taking the buffer away. It's not, it's not in our DNA to take the buffer away. We may take the cul-de-sac and make it a lot smaller, so that there is more green. We, we will work with the landscape to place the, the homes or the apartment buildings so that they fit, and are not just another big house on the landscape. We would hope to have reasonable kinds of, you know, solar, and I would like to see a little community garden. I would like whoever lives here to enjoy walking to the train and maybe to the elementary school. I do not think that, that when we say we're gonna have apartments, we're gonna have a lot of people having kids in those apartments. Remember what I said earlier tonight? The Kingston, the master plan is that we need apartments and smaller units for the seniors in this town. Call them elderly, call them getting younger. I don't feel younger tonight, I'll tell you that right now. I feel like we need to develop alternative, adjustable, if you will, homes that will fit our community as we change. So I don't think that the gentleman that had three kids should think that the only people that are gonna be in there are people that are hiding five kids. I, I don't think that that's gonna happen, because we're in charge. We get to say, "Who's gonna live there?" They're gonna be able to afford the rent, or they're gonna be able to afford a mortgage. It's not that they're people you don't know. It's that they are people that aren't making what you're making. They're not making $84,000 a year for a family of four. That's, they're not doing that, okay? But they are reasonable people, and they're gonna, and you're gonna be helping them. So that's, that's one thing. As far as the government rules, government doesn't rule, we're the government, right? We, the people, are the government. We, the Affordable Housing Trust, are the government. We're not, we're not trying to lay down a federal bureaucracy on this. What we're trying to do is create affordable homes for people in the community to live in. And we're trying to do it on a derelict piece of property that is being vandalized, that is not being used, that actually used to be the throughway to the dump for most of us, until somebody I know got up at a town meeting and made it, and made, and made it a one, and made it a one-way street. But I believe that, and I, and that probably was the only option at the time, but the train station wasn't there, and so on and so forth. I think that we can create affordable housing there with maintaining a buffer, making this a useful, wonderful place to live, and having the neighbors actually think that it's a good idea if they give us a shot at it.
Thank you, Mr. Dubois. Ma'am?
Hi. Deb Smith, Podberry Lane. I fully support what you're doing. This piece of property, however, is unique in a lot of ways, and there's one that we're all missing, and that is in an area that I used to go back and hear, Whippoorwill's. We have a lot of wildlife passing through, and as we're building out the town, we need to leave areas where they can pass through without encountering us. Also, because of it being a buffer, because it being an emergency access, having had some training and experience on that front, yeah, that is a backdoor emergency entrance for the school, and we do need to keep that in mind. How about a partial change in what you'd like, is this might be, in some respects, a great area for, say, the community farm, the projects that we would like to have in this town. You know, instead of having all of it developed, have it only partially developed with a couple new homes, even if they're tiny homes, if that standard is possible. But instead of, you know, fully developing it all, get some, an area where people can do some of that community farming, get the children from the elementary school and intermediately school involved in that. It's something that could-
Excuse me, ma'am. Gentlemen in the back, if you're gonna have a conversation, as I said, Dubois, take it out. It's disrespectful. Go ahead, ma'am.
It's something to consider, and I would ask that you do consider it, Paige.
Pine?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ma'am?
Hi, Jean Coleman, 20 Hollins Lane. I think the piece of property sounds great. I think it's great that it's already zoned commercial. I'm just wondering if we've considered it for that police station that's on the horizon?
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Who did I have? Now, I'm good, now it's you. Huh? Go ahead.
Russ Boyd, 14 Werf Lane. Question on how the affordable housing is taxed, taxes on that unit. Who pays the taxes on that?
Sir, Mr. Dubois, I mean, Mr. Dubois, can you answer that?
The owner of the property.
So-
The owner of the property, so-
Ma'am, one person at a time. Wait till she answers, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Dubois.
So, so let's, let's say that we are able to build a single-family house and an apartment. Just say, there's no plan, okay? That's why we went, we got the money, thank you, so that we can make a plan. There's no plan, that's why there haven't been great, big, huge public discussions yet, but there will be, because we're not, we're not so bold, or, we're not so bold to think that we're gonna make a plan, develop it without a lot of community input.
But can you answer his question? His question was taxes. Who will pay the taxes?
The tax, so, so we build the unit, we sell the unit to a person who pays taxes, like yourself.
So, me as a homeowner, and as a senior citizen, I have no mortgage. My taxes are, what Ms. McKinnon referred to earlier, averagely speaking, $6,000 a year. So I move into affordable housing, and I'm still paying the same amount of taxes, so how is affordable housing affordable if I'm still paying the same taxes when I don't even have a mortgage?
Mr. Dubois?
It's based on the value of the, of the place that you live. So you're not gonna take your no mortgage with you unless you pay it off completely, in which case, you'll pay what, you'll pay tax based on the value that you paid for the home. You're not gonna, I'm not gonna pay your taxes for you, you know, neither are the people on Copper Beach. You'll pay them yourself. The idea is to help somebody, not to, you know, not to pay their way.
But again-
In other words, sir, one minute. The issue would be is, is that the value of the property would be less.
I understand, I understand, Madam.
Okay, so next question?
My, my question, my question was, is that averagely speaking, if the average citizen or average homeowner in the town of Kingston is paying $6,000 a year, I'm not saying, based on the value, that's true, but if I can't afford to stay in the house I'm in now with no mortgage, and I move to affordable housing, I'm gonna have a mortgage, and I gotta pay taxes, so it's really not helping me at all.
I think your answer would be, is what she indicated, which was, you would sell your house, you would buy the affordable housing without a mortgage, and you would be paying less taxes, because the value of the affordable housing is less than your current home. That's the answer.
If it is valued at less.
Well, you wouldn't move if it wasn't. I mean, you know, it's a logic there too. So let's, one second, Mr. Dubois. Town Council, go ahead.
The, the value of the house is restricted because there's a deed restriction on it, which your current fair market value house doesn't have, so that reduces the value of the home.
So in other words, there'll be a cap on what the, what this, this housing will be? They won't be able to, in other words, if, so you could say the fair market value's $400,000, but there's a cap and say, no, it's, you can only assess it at $200,000?
That would be the value, yes, that's correct.
And anybody who buys then has to sell under the same restrictions, so they then sell for the $200,000.
Correct.
So it's the same thing all along. Okay? I have, I can't even see.
Phil O'Neill, 3 Copper Beach Drive. If you, if this goes forward, would you need to have a zoning change to put this in? This development?
Town Council, can you answer that?
No, I think that's, that was Mr. Bott's comment earlier. You would use Chapter 40B, the LIP process, in order to go around that particular zoning-
So we'd go through a 40B?
One second, sir, let her finish answering, and I'll call him back to you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So it would go, you would be excused, so to speak, from the restriction on the commercial industrial zone by using the local initiative program under Chapter 40B.
Okay, no, I understand that.
So now, sir, do you have another?
As long as you go 40B, there's basically the state will override any town bylaw.
Well, in this, no, you have to show that it's necessary, but in this instance, as a local initiative project, it would be supported or controlled by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, and my next question, when you reached out to everybody on Copper Beach Drive, how did, how did they do that? With a letter, a phone call? Because every, I've lived there for 17 years, and nobody was ever informed of anything.
So-
One second, Mr. Dubois. You, you weren't informed about anything of what?
Well, Pine said earlier that they, she, you guys reached out to Copper Beach Drive. Everybody that I lived with for the past 17 years, nobody heard anything until, you know, social network, basically.
Okay. So, Mr. Dubois, do you want to talk about who you reached out to?
I only want to say that, you know, we spoke with Brian, we spoke with David Kennedy, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten the other person's name that came and met with the Affordable Housing Trust.
Out of 19-
One second, sir.
Oh, wait, could you, could you let me?
I'm controlling the volume.
You know, I had asked, I had asked Brian a couple of times to, we asked him to organize a neighborhood get-together so that we could talk to him. I went up there with lots of flyers to go talk to him. He happened to be having an event at his house that day. I stayed away. We're not trying to be pushy. We didn't have, we don't really have anything to say yet. So it was premature to try and, all we wanted to do was to let you know we were thinking about it. But again, because we know that it's sensitive, we don't have a plan. Anything could happen any day up there. That's what you need to understand. What you get with us is knowing that you're working with your fellow Kingstonians to develop something that you can like. That's what you're getting.
Mr. Bott, I think what Mr. O'Neil might be looking for is can you make a commitment tonight that if you're going to be developing a project there, that you will actually send a written notice to all of the residents on Copper Beach?
I will absolutely swear to you on everything I believe in that we will be in touch with the Copper Beach neighborhood each and every door.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, you had me at, "We don't have a plan." That's what you had me.
Sorry.
We don't have a plan yet either.
Mr. Bott, I have Mr. Wilson, and then I have Mr. Gallagher.
I just want to address the "we don't have a plan" piece a little bit. The Affordable Housing Trust had zero dollars until tonight, where we moved money that was allocated for affordable housing from one bucket into the Affordable Housing Trust so that they actually have some resources to make some plans. They also don't have control over the land, and, you know, put yourself in the shoes of any developer. And again, as I said before, this becomes our affordable housing development company for the town of Kingston. Until they get site control, you know, one point eight-two acres here, and I would say to those who are worried about, you know, it not even being feasible for it to be single-family homes, I would look to the end of Country Club Way, right on that elbow, which is very close to this, and there's a small cluster that is a Forty-B, and those are single-family homes. And I would argue offhand that that's about a two-acre parcel. Might be a little bit more than that, so maybe a unit or so would come off of that. But that gives you a little bit of context. Now granted, you have to maintain the access, emergency access issue, and you have to work with the community, but it is possible to do single-family home there. I think that what they would probably do, if it was me, is some sort of design charrette with the Copper Beach community and others who would want to weigh in, to say, here are some concepts, here's what could be done. We could get this many affordable units of this type of housing. We could do town homes, and it could lay out like this, or you might support something else. So now that we have some funds allocated to the trust, and if you vote to approve this and they are site-controlled by the Affordable Housing Trust, they can then work with the community, including the Board of Selectmen, to make sure that the interests of the community are heard and that something goes forward that both gets on the tax roll and works to meet our affordable housing needs and is not objectionable to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I have Mr. Gallagher.
Paul Gallagher, Town Clerk, Eight Longview Drive. Like I said last week, it's difficult for the Town Clerk to come down and address the public because there's been this impression over the years that the Town Clerk is non-political and has no opinion. Well, that's wrong, and I'm going to change that tonight. Three years ago, we voted in Affordable Housing Trust. Almost three years ago, I put my name in. I was the one and only person to put my name in because I thought it was a very valuable effort by the town to create affordable housing. But it never got off the ground. Two years went by, didn't get off the ground. Three years goes by, you know, here we are. We've created an Affordable Housing Trust, we've got enough members, so in the last six months, we passed the bylaw to create the Affordable Housing Trust, which we didn't really need. We created the Affordable Housing Trust, and they could act without being a bylaw, but we like to make everything a bylaw so that we can add and take away and all that other stuff. But we created the bylaw tonight, and then we just approved funding, six hundred thousand dollars. And all of that was without any plans. All of that was, we don't know what we're going to do. All of that was, we're not sure how many units, we're not sure where we're going to put it, we're not sure what we're going to have. But I can tell you that the end of Copper Beach Drive is a buffer for that neighborhood. It was a buffer that we voted for back many years ago when the train was there so that that Copper Beach Drive could enjoy a real community and a decent living. But we have, it was a buffer. But that one point eight acres has an emergency access for fire and police. We're talking about maybe creating community gardens there. We're talking about green space. We're talking about solar. We're talking about it abuts the school. We're talking it's a med flight landing access, and we're talking about it's an MBTA easement. And if we can't get through Route Three-A, the only way to the other side of town is through that emergency access. We're going to put all of that on one point eight acres. Where is a building going to fit? Ask yourself that.
All right, come on.
I will also say that I have heard a number of times, as the Town Clerk and a town meeting, that they reached out to representatives of Copper Beach Drive. There are nineteen households. If each has two, that's thirty-eight people. They spoke to three. Now, I support affordable housing. I support the efforts of these people that are on this committee. I support that they're confident that they're going to get something done, but within ten minutes of giving them six hundred thousand dollars, they have a plan that isn't a plan. We need to stop doing this. We cannot allow funding to go forward and zoning to go forward without plans. We do that and we get ourselves in trouble. If you want, if the Affordable Housing Trust is really committed, they will go back, they will have multiple choices for us, they will get a plan together, and they will present it to us. We cannot vote without a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Enough. Ma'am?
Barbara Hansen, One Copper Beach Drive. I've lived here twenty-seven years, and as Paul Gallagher says, it was a buffer for the train station. We got the train station. And secondly, the school bus turns around up there. How are you going to commute the students to go to Kingston Elementary and the intermediate school, middle school and high school if the bus can't turn around? There's no sidewalks and there's no lights on that road. That's going to be an expense to the town that's not included in this Affordable Housing Act. How is the answer going to be with the school buses? And when there's a fire, the fire truck turns around up there. Everyone turns around up there. There's no access to turn out anywhere else. It's a narrow road, and a lot of little hills in between. Someone talk about a child getting hurt, a child will get hurt on that road if you make this no cul-de-sac. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manson. Mr. Don Darrow?
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Gallagher. God bless you, and the town of Kingston's lucky we got you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Tim Dewar, Country Club Way. Huge proponent of affordable housing, and I live in Indian Pond, and if there's any representation of how Forty-B can successfully be done, I think it's in that development. Houses are tastefully done, they're, you know, fit well within the community, but it's also done by a developer that's got decades of experience building these things. In the last two hours, we've created an Affordable Housing Trust, we funded it with six hundred thousand, and now we want to do our first deal. My concern is that we have a number of well-meaning volunteers with a great lack of real estate development expertise, and we have no plan. We don't know whether it's single-family housing, we don't know whether it's apartments or condos or high-rises or what have you. We in this town have a tendency to rush forward with great ideas and great intentions without necessarily thinking through the consequences. And so I respectfully request that we table the motion.
All right. All right, we have a motion to table. That has been seconded. So tabling means it will not be voted. It will be taken off. It needs a two-thirds majority to pass. So I'm going to, I'm just going to do a card vote immediately. So do I have my tellers? All right, everybody ready? All those that want to table it and it will not be voted, raise your yellow card. Pine, have you voted?
I don't know.
No, 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 I meant, you're sitting down to vote, is that what you're doing? Okay. Oh, because you can do it up here, too, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure you had a voting right. That's one thing you were doing. Huh? Yeah, you can just stand over by the finance committee, and that will take you up. Mr. Bazler?
Twenty-seven.
Mr. Bazler is twenty-seven. Mr. Pepe?
Twenty-three.
Mr. Pepe is twenty-three. Mr. Armstrong?
Twenty-eight.
Mr. Armstrong is twenty-eight. All those opposed of tabling and want to vote it tonight, card near.
Seventeen.
Mr. Bazler is seventeen. Mr. Pepe?
Fourteen.
Mr. Pepe is fourteen. Mr. Armstrong?
Twenty-two.
Mr. Armstrong is twenty-two. So I've got seventy-eight, fifty-three, so I mean, I mean seventy-eight, fifty-three, so it doesn't matter. I just, I always double-check this, that two-third thing, it's still that math. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, the yes votes were seventy-eight, the no votes were fifty-three, but because the yes votes are not a two-thirds majority, it does not carry. I mean, it does not carry. So the motion to table does not carry. I don't have anybody at the mic doing that, but I'm inclined to want to move that way. Yep? About what?
Motion reconsider.
You can't reconsider a motion to table. It's not reconsiderable. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to sound snappy on that. It's not reconsiderable. It's not debatable, it's, I'll just double-check, but it's pretty much not reconsiderable. So...
Yes, it is.
Actually, it is. I stand corrected. It is reconsiderable. So I'm not quite sure, but, I mean, we have a seventy-eight, fifty-three, so, all right, we'll do a motion to reconsider. All those that would like to revote, no, they're not debatable. So all of those that want to reconsider and revote the motion to table, which would mean that you're taking it off and not to be heard. So the motion to reconsider would be to reopen up the motion to table. So a yes vote reopens up the motion to table. Huh? I didn't, you're right. I need a second on that.
Second.
All right, hold on a second. Hold on a second.
Motion to reconsider, seconded. Motion to reconsider by Mr. Wilson, seconded. Any yes vote, we'll go back to motion to table, okay? Just to be clear on what we're reconsidering. So all those in favor of reconsidering and going back to the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion does not carry. Going back now, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to remind everyone and let them know. We have now been debating this for ten forty-seven. Sometimes it comes down to, ladies and gentlemen, a debate is enough, people are going to vote where they're going to vote and they're going to go. So it's nine fifty-seven, we're almost at forty, what is that, fifty minutes on this? So...
Nine forty-seven.
Mr. Bonsek, you've already spoken. Mr. Faunt, you've spoken. The sir behind you, have you?
No.
All right, I'd like to hear from you. And Mr. Bott. And then I'm going to...
I just want to move the question.
All right, well, I didn't hear that, and I didn't call him, so... Huh? I'm going to call this gentleman, Mr. Bott, and I'll do the, move the question.
Eric Crone, forty-three, Longwood Circle. Again, I spoke earlier to another question. Reminder, I'm the chairman of the elementary school committee, and I'm on the regional school committee. So again, I see the budgets. Those are the biggest areas for expenses in the town. My biggest concern, once again, is that with this, we don't have a plan. We have no idea what kind of a unit will go in here. The examples that were given were a family of four. Right there, you're losing money. You have just one unit with one kid, you're losing money because one kid is going to cost between ten and fourteen thousand dollars. It sounds like I'm anti-kid. I'm not. I have four kids and I actually... Exactly. I made out pretty good living here in Kingston. You guys have helped me. But my taxes are about, I don't know, seven thousand dollars a year, and right now I have three kids in the school system. But if I just had one kid in the school system, my taxes don't cover that. So if you put in one single-family home with one kid, you've lost. Now, I know this sounds horrible because we all support affordable housing, but we really need to look at our taxes. There's going to be a lot more housing in Kingston. There's homes that are being built right now. There's going to be a lot of affordable housing in Plymouth. There's a huge six-hundred-unit apartment complex that includes a tremendous amount of affordable housing right behind my office down in North Plymouth by the Courtech. That's six-hundred units. I have no idea how they're going to move all those units. So I understand that we're not meeting the state minimum, but do we really want to potentially increase our costs to the town and not increase our revenue? I mean, I think we need to be looking at, and I know the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee are trying to look at other revenue streams and trying to look at building businesses that will pay taxes without having, increasing expenses like kids in the schools.
Yeah, it deserves to be reconsidered.
But I just want you to kind of keep that in mind, and in my opinion, I think we should hold off, wait till there's a plan in place so we know what kind of unit is going to be going in there, and then make a decision at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dubois?
Yes. So I hear you. You know, you don't believe that we're really with the program yet, is what you don't believe. And you like, you know, the street where your kids can play, but nobody else's can. I also get that. So I think that there's a lot of education that we have to do. No, I do. The fire trucks argument is not a good argument, the school bus argument, not a good argument. The cul-de-sac is twice as big as it needs to be. What I want to do tonight is withdraw the motion because I don't think that we've had enough discussion on it. But we're not going to spend money on this parcel. We can't. If it's not in the control of the Affordable Housing Trust, we can't spend money on the parcel. So we're not going to move ahead with it, and I think that, you know, the neighborhood, to be fair to the rest of us in Kingston, needs to commit to start coming to the Affordable Housing Trust and see if we can bring this back. Because guess what? The MBTA is going to be rezoning all of their land right there, and Mary O'Donnell's is coming, too. So if you want a real buffer, this is the way to get it. So I move to withdraw the motion. Madam Moderator?
And I'm going to take a vote on that. That requires a majority vote. So all those in favor of moving, motion to withdraw, meaning it will not be heard at this town meeting. It can't be brought back. It's gone. So it does not have to be seconded. So on the motion to withdraw, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. It's a majority vote.
I got a point of privilege, please.
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Bonsek, I think this gentleman was first, just if I can, he said something first, so don't, yes, sir.
I was trying to move that we adjourn.
Okay. Mr. Bonsek had a point of order.
That's our motion to adjourn until the next designated day.
Okay, one second, ladies and gentlemen. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion to adjourn. I have a second. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is a motion to adjourn to June fifth, two thousand and seventeen, seven PM, Kingston Intermediate School. That's June fifth, two thousand and seventeen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And ladies and gentlemen, it's ten fifty-two PM. And ladies and gentlemen, it is 10:52 PM.